Good morning, everyone. It is a beautiful day out there today. Thank you very much for joining the Ventura County Board of Supervisors today on June 9th, 2020. This is our regular board meeting. We have a roll call, please.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Let's give it a second. All supervisors are joining us on Zoom, for everyone to know. So if you could, we'll be doing a roll call.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
I see he's there. We'll give him a minute.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Good morning.
Supervisor Huber?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here. And we got Supervisor Zaragoza, correct?
Can you hear me?
Yes. We knew you were here.
I'm sorry. Okay.
No, wonderful. Thank you so much. So we have a full Board of Supervisors here for our meeting today. And at this time, we will now do our Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Powers, would you lead us?
(Inaudible) One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's always good to set the tone of our meetings. We have our next item is our regular and special minutes from the meeting of the county and special districts for May 19th to approve. Board members, if you do not have any questions, or if you do, please let me know now. If not, I will take a motion to approve.
Still move Zaragoza?
Second, Huber.
It's been first by Supervisor Zaragoza and second by Supervisor Huber. Any further discussions? So roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett? Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. And that motion is approved unanimously. The next item is our agenda review. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Long. Board members, Item 8, Public Comments. Comment letters from Renee Ayew, Pamela Ott, Sheri Ackerman, Jerry Fong, and Emily Sosa have been distributed to the Board and added to the official record. Item 43, CEO's Office. Approval of $20 million economic stabilization and recovery program utilizing funding to provide business assistant grants and rental assistance grants. Request to be heard after Item 11. Item 45, Public Works. Approval of the plans and specs for the Ventura County Medical Center Ronald McDonald Family Rooms Project. A PowerPoint presentation has been distributed to the Board and added to the official record. Item 60, CEO's Office. Public hearing regarding amending the service rates and fees for various services of the county. A board letter and attachments 1 through 19 have been distributed to the Board and added to the official record. Item 61, CEO's Office. Review of the proposed fiscal year 2020-21 recommended budget and receive and file the fiscal year 2019-20 third quarter budget report. A revised board letter, recommended budget from ACO, a comment letter from Luis Lampada Colab, a PowerPoint presentation for HCA have been distributed to the Board and added to the official record. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, do you have any changes or modifications? I would like to suggest that we hear Item Number 11 right after Item Number 8. So then that would move 11 and then 43 right after that. So with that, if I could get a motion to approve by one of our supervisors?
Still move.
Okay. It's been first by Supervisor Zaragoza.
Second, Bennett.
And second by Bennett. And any further discussion? I do want to announce that our June 22nd board meeting will be canceled, just so people know, give you advance notice. So roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. So the motion has been approved unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item we have is our Moment of Inspiration. And we, we have as a county have not only been hit by a pandemic, which caused us, has caused us on our county, uncertainty with economy, food, shelter, education, mental and physical health. We have also as a society have been facing injustice. And as we have been watching the national news with the killing of George Floyd and other deaths associated with the looting and rioting that's come after, we wanted to let you know, many of you do know already, but just to repeat, that this county does not take things lightly. And I appreciate working with our faith-based leaders and our community leaders, all of us do, to encourage communication and empathy towards others as we move forward. And so today, I, myself and Mr. Powers and our Board, we've asked Ms. Regina "That Hatcher" Crawford to please come up to the podium. She was, is with NAACP. And I wanted, if people don't know, the NAACP, their goal is to provide timely information regarding the status of civil rights in Ventura County. And with that, I appreciate it. But I wanted to read a quote from your website. And this is from you, Regina. And it says, "It takes each of us to make a difference. For if we choose to believe we can, we will. Changing the world with our words, our thoughts, and our actions." And you state that "My belief is we all have an inherent destiny to serve humanity. Sometimes it is not by choice. It is our calling and it is our belief in God." So with that, I just, you are a moment of inspiration to me and to so many of us. So please, good morning.
Thank you. Wow. I'm about to say wow. That's a truly exciting. I didn't realize that people actually listen to some of the things that I say. Thank you. And thank you, Mike Powers, for inviting me. And thank you for the Board of Supervisors for inviting us to attend your meeting. As you know, we are in a state of civil unrest. And while this happened in Minneapolis, it actually affected and impacted everyone across the Board. So you're seeing demonstrations and protests across the nation. While we had one Thursday, and again, I have to thank Mike Powers and Supervisor Zaragoza, who immediately jumped into action and assisted us in being able to have such a peaceful march. And we've been hearing rabbing reviews that it was controlled. What people didn't see behind the scene was that we had met with Mike Powers, CEO Mike Powers, law enforcement, Ventura PD, the sheriff, Oxnard, the DA, to be able to have a meeting where we all agree that best to move forward for this county to have this rally. So we chose not to have the law enforcement in front. What people didn't realize in saying that is that they were still behind us, supporting us. And so due to the relationships that my father had established, I'm able to carry on the mission of the NAACP. So it's important for this community to understand that without these relationships, we're not able to build our community. So in saying that, you wanted to know where we've been so far. Phones ringing off the hook, you know, especially in light of Simi Valley, the issue with Simi Valley. So we've been addressing it, still waiting for a call from the mayor. And I, in saying that, the reason why I say that is, again, due to the relationships with Mike Powers and others on his Board, we're able to resolve issues and be able to work to look for a solution for what's in best interest of all people. We're hearing this Simi Valley community calling out. Last night, I sat on a Zoom meeting with another organization and listening to people from Thousand Oaks and Newbury Park and how they're being impacted by this movement. One, one lady talked about how her son stood up for injustice and now he's being bullied. And another lady saying that, "I didn't realize my neighbors are part of," I'm not going to, I'd never want to give life to an organization, but a part of opposing organization. And she says, "What do I do? I'm afraid." So I think everybody somewhere in this community has been impacted. You're feeling a certain kind of way. We're all uncomfortable with talking about things that are happening in our community. So most of the units are now in a phase where we're trying to make sure it doesn't happen in our community. We already had our moment 30 years ago with the Rodney King case. And due through these relationships, we've been able to minimize them. Now, are we perfect? We absolutely are not. I will not stand here and say that we are. We still have some issues that we're addressing. And Mike said it best, and I was listening to you. People want to hold leadership accountable. Absolutely, we should be accountable, but also understand that it starts systematically at the bottom. And how do we change the attitude and cultures? So I really want to thank the Board for the support and continue to support, say continue to support us in the work that the NAACP is doing in Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking. I really do appreciate it. And it's so important that we hear the words of all. Board members or Mr. Powers, did you have a comment? I wanted to make sure we opened it up. Ms. Supervisor Zaragoza? Yes, please.
Thank you. I, the past, last Thursday, the NAACP County of Ventura Chapter, President Regina "Hatcher" and her sister Stacy and members of the organized people, peaceful rally honoring George Floyd attended here, a rally at the County of Ventura. And we were accompanied by numerous elected officials from the federal, from the state level, and also from our, from our cities, and of course, Mr. Mike Powers. There was hundreds and hundreds of people, you know, from the community that attended the rally in support of racial equality. And it was very successful and very peaceful. So I'd like to commend Regina and Stacy for that. But I'd like to share a quote that I believe is really important right now. This is from Martin Luther King. And by the quote, "In the end, comma, remember the words of none of our enemies, but the silence of our friends," end of quote. In the end, we'll remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. And I think that's extremely important. I want to thank Regina and the NAACP and her sister and all the NAACP individuals that participated in a very peaceful, peaceful rally. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. Was there anyone else? Mr. Powers?
Supervisor, yes.
Go ahead, Supervisor Bennett.
Supervisor, thank you. I'm trying to get myself there. I just wanted to say thank you to Regina and everybody who's part of, who is part of the organization. And I'm trying to, I'm sorry, the camera for some reason is...
Oh, there he is. Okay. I hope it's not an earthquake.
There we go. All right. Anyway, I wanted to thank Regina and the, and the organization for the leadership that they've shown over the years, the fact that we've, that they annually, we, they come to the boardroom, we have the relationships, meant that at this critical moment of leadership, they were well poised and they just handled themselves so well in terms of working with everybody. But this is, this is a very important moment in the history of our country, I believe. And I just welcome the, the leadership that we have from Regina and her organization as we all work hard to find our way through this. So thank you very much, Regina. And please pass those sentiments on to all the other people in the NAACP organization that you're leading with to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Bob Huber. I'd like to make a comment if I like.
Yes, please Supervisor Huber.
Yes. Thank you, Regina, for being here. I'd like to commend all of our residents for setting an example and participating in peaceful demonstrations in Simi Valley, Moore Park, and throughout Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes, please.
I also very much appreciate the great work of NAACP and our Ventura County Chapter here. I think what you said, Regina, is so meaningful. It is about relationships and, and being able to break down barriers. And so while we're now looking at major protests, to bring everyone's attention to the disparities and inequalities that are out there, particularly for people who are Black, I want to see that we take this as a county and use this as a learning lesson to make changes. And I think that's what we need to see from government is some real systematic changes. And I look forward to seeing some real positive outcomes as a result. And I just thank you so much for your participation and your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, supervisors. Mr. Powers?
Thank you so much, Chair, and Board members. And Regina, thank you so much for coming today. So, such a wonderful rally you had on, on Thursday. Such great speakers. They were so powerful and inspiring. So it was, it was a beautiful rally, I think. And I think it's important that we all recognize that these protests are the, and rallies are the language of the unheard, of the anger and the pain and the frustration. And we need to listen, and we need to listen more and better. And you can feel that this is a moment in history, right?
Absolutely.
Pivotal moment in history. But we can feel some sense of community coming. And I think that's what you brought as well with that rally, was that sense of coming together to tackle these issues of racism and justice and equity head-on. And it was, it was powerful to do that. You know, I know our Board and our county family here is, these issues are very important to us. We convened a meeting of our Diversity and Inclusion Task Force to get really real comments and feelings and suggestions from them, and we got them. And some of what they wanted us to do was to hold town halls. And so we're holding two of those this week.
Oh, wow.
Opening forums, so we can hear from our employees who care so much and so deeply about the vulnerable in our community and hear their, their feelings and their ideas about how we can move better. But it's just been such a wonderful partnership with you and Stacy Looney and the, and the ACP, and just look forward to continuing to work together to you to take us to a better place. So thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you all for inviting me. Like I said, we look forward to continue our work with the Board of Supervisors and leadership in the Ventura County community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Thank you for all your time and effort you do. And just, please pass that on to everyone.
I sure will.
Thank you so much.
You guys have a great day.
We will.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
One thing for, as Regina left, no, there she, yeah. I just wanted to say, I certainly was there with you in spirit, but I was not able to, to attend that rally. I was up in Sacramento at the time that it was all getting organized together. So I just wanted to let you know, I was just coming back and into town. And so thank you very much, but certainly at the next rally, I will certainly be there. Thank you.
And we definitely understand. And one of the messages that Derek, CEO, or CEO and President, has been, of course, with the COVID-19, has been expressing social distancing. So we got it. We understand. And we understand a lot of people couldn't make it, but they were there in spirit. So thank you.
Madam Chair, before Regina leaves, I also want to thank Terry from GSA for setting up the, the speakers and the podium and so forth. Initially, we were looking towards Victoria, and when we figured we probably have 700 to 1,000 people, his good work as a, as a county employee helped us out and with Regina and your help, turned it around, and there we were with close to 1,000 people listening to the, to us and setting up that equipment that helped out a lot. So I'm going to thank Terry from GSA and the GSA Department for helping us out.
Thank you for allowing me to, to request him. Yeah. CEO Powers Zaragoza definitely came through helping us request him to assist in the program. So, I mean, and also hoping he was my husband. He didn't find out until later, but, you know, but it, he was on board and we appreciate his professionalism.
Did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do, we recognize...
I too have worked with Terry, and he is wonderful. And I want to also just thank Mr. Powers, too. The idea that we're bringing forward some workshops with our employees and making that atmosphere where they're feeling comfortable enough to give suggestions, to speak from their heart, I think that is just very meaningful and that too will help us to move forward. So thank you for doing that.
Mike, Madam Chair, one more thing, too, that I think Regina mentioned, too. But we also, in that meeting that we had initially before the meeting, we want to thank the DA's office and also the Chief of Police from the City of Ventura.
And the sheriffs, right, yeah. They were always sitting there.
And we will continue our partnership. And this is, we wanted to make sure we took this moment just to appreciate. And we are looking very much forward to continuing the relationships that we have with all our leaders to really move this county forward.
Thank you.
Because we are amazing counties. So thank you very much.
Thank you. See you guys later.
Thank you. I know, it's just like, oh. Thank you, supervisors, for your, your kind words and wisdom. We really appreciate it, especially in, in these times with so much going on. The next item, oh, that's a good day. The next item is our consent agenda, which is Items 12 through 42. And I need to ask, any of the supervisors have any questions, comments, concerns on these items? And if you do, please let me know now, or I will take a motion to approve.
Still move.
Huber, second.
First, by Supervisor Zaragoza, and second by Supervisor Huber. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. So that motion approves unanimously for those consent items. Thank you very much for all the departments for your hard work in getting all that done. Now we will move on to public comments. Thank you to everyone who has sent in your comments via email at clerkoftheboard@verizon@ventura.org. And then also for those, we have not received any Zoom meetings requests that, to the deadline, so we will only be reading the public comments today. I think we received one Zoom comment past the deadline, and so they submitted an email so that we make sure we hear from everybody. Those that stated they, that did not ask to be read are, will be attached to the agenda or to the information once we're done. And I will now give it to the Clerk of the Board. We have our first one for public speaker is Robert Munoz-Akkinson.
Yes, good morning to your long Board members and CEO Powers. First email is from Robert Munoz, and it says, "To the Honorable Ventura County Board of Supervisors, I respectfully petition Board members to direct the healthcare agency to mathematically model whether medical services will be overwhelmed by COVID-19 patients by implementing less restrictive alternatives to public health orders. Public feedback is required to model alternatives that are outlined in the following two emails to state and county public health officers or in my May 5th petition and attached questions. If medical services will not be overwhelmed using least restrictive alternatives, please file a lawsuit by 6/12/20 to strike down Governor Newsom's executive order and -33-20 and California's May 7th, 2020 reopening order. It is tragic that individuals die from COVID-19, but that does not justify using a bait-and-switch tactic to rationalize enforcing California's reopening order arbitrarily infringing on constitutional rights or arbitrarily closing businesses and services. Will state of emergencies be declared next to protect medical services and arbitrarily suspend the Constitution to reduce preventable deaths of 40,000 Californians or 480,000 Americans, including 41,000 from secondhand smoke annually from tobacco-related causes? Using meaningful metrics, updated COVID-19 statistics, and computer disease modeling for unique circumstances in Ventura County, smart goals and best medical practices will benefit Ventura County residents by, one, protecting medical services and personnel, higher-risk or vulnerable individuals who require hospitalizations, jobs, businesses, and the economy; two, giving more residents hope by identifying least restrictive alternatives that minimize transmission of higher viral loads, patient hospitalization, and fatalities; and three, reducing GDP contraction, which lowers tax revenues to less, less predicted by Wharton University's model of California."
Thank you for your comments. The next item, the next person is Engie Nishman?
Yes, and that reads, "To the Board of Supervisors, as concerned homeowners of the Seronata neighborhood, we would like to bring the following to your attention. Today, the revised proposed draft ordinance dated June 5th was brought to our attention via a neighbor. Even though we wrote in on previous meetings and voiced our concerns about the cannabis cultivation in our area, we did not receive the ordinance ourselves. We would appreciate if we are kept informed and included in the discussion going forward. We are concerned that the Ad Commissioner, Andy Calderwood, has the sole oversight over the cannabis crop. How can regular county employee have the oversight over a crop that has a strict state and federal regulations? A one-half-mile buffer is not enough to keep the smell away from our properties. Neither can our complaint be remedied by planting low odor varieties of cannabis, as they don't exist. Cannabis smells even when it is not budding. Low odor is a myth. Research facilities should not be exempt from one-mile buffer, whether cultivated for research or recreational use. The smell and as such, the nuisance is the same. No regulation should be allowed to be put in place by the county that would take away our rights to sue for nuisance. Please do the right thing and protect our rights to enjoy the properties in peace. We are not against CBD or growing hemp. We demand the sufficient buffer from the noxious odor emanating from the crop."
Thank you for your comments, and I know that the Ad Commissioner has received that as well. The next person is Stephanie Mayo?
Yes. Dear Board of Supervisors, at the February 25th board meeting, the Ad Commissioner and the county promised to be more transparent with my community, Seronata, and the drafting of the ordinance for hemp cultivation. As always, nothing has changed. A few weeks ago, one of our residents alerted me to the illegal cannabis grow in the Tierra Rahada Valley. There were acres of wild cannabis growing across the street. It took my community several phone calls and emails and two clearings by the owner to finally get it removed. It should have taken one phone call. Unfortunately, the call that resulted in resolution was to the Sheriff Department. The sergeant told me that any call for suspicious grow gets relayed to Andy Calderwood, the Deputy Ad Commissioner, to look into. This incident demonstrates that we can't have one person as our checks and balances. The new proposed ordinance that I was originally excluded from once again has the farmers regulating their own crops, makes exemptions for non-existent low odor crops, and precludes homeowners from filing nuisance claims. Like always, our input was ignored again. Unfortunately, lack of candor and oversight by the county, along with an ordinance that doesn't protect homeowners, leads my community to believe our fate will be similar to that of carpentaries, a community overrun by cannabis stench with a self-regulated industry marred by criminal black market sales. Please rethink the new proposed ordinance."
Thank you for your comments, Stephanie. Next item is with Marty Douglas?
From Marty Douglas, "Oh, this ordinance is horrible."
Um, from Marty Douglas, "Oh, this ordinance is horrible. Use is exempt. No, I'm not sure you can take our rights away like this, but if you can, you should not. Low, uh, low odor. There are no odor, there are no low odor varieties. Mr. Williams admitted in his previous Board of Supervisors meeting, how can you possibly agree to this ordinance? Non-flowering varieties does not work. Non-flowering and flowering plants smell from planting to post-harvest. How can you possibly put this ordinance? It makes people sick. A half-mile buffer? No, that does not work either. Those near Tierra Rahada are farther than a half-mile and are extremely negative, negatively affected. Yet you're entertaining this inadequate buffer. This was proven again by Mr. Kazzard's wild illegal grow that we have been smelling lately. He was made to remove it, took too long, and now the smell is gone. Greenhouses? No, they don't work either. Even though Ms. Lombardo is being paid as a lobbyist to, to you by greenhouse builders, no, they are not effective at this time. Say no. Research facilities should not be exempt because they smell and they make people sick. I don't understand why the Board of Supervisors has dealing with the Ag Commissioner and his office is dealing with the hemp farmers and residents that have been excluded from the process writing this ordinance. We have not been invited to the table. Please listen to your constituents. This has, uh, not been a fair process."
Thank you very much. Uh, next one is Melanie Parrish.
It reads, "Dear Ventura County Board of Supervisors, as a citizen of Moor Park in Ventura County, I hope you keep the public informed of all the issues and discussions being held. We also want the right to sue for public nuisance. We need to be able to band together and have our voices be heard. If this is a much bigger problem than you anticipate, this is a new problem and we do not want to be the test case. Most surrounding cities are putting the discussion off until more is known. We have already experienced and smelled the difficulties this plant brings. One-half mile is not enough of a buffer. It affects the lives of the people and businesses that live near the farms in a negative way. Our local police force and mayor are against it. Please vote with the citizens of Moor Park."
Thank you very much. And then we have, uh, panel remotes.
And that reads, "Ventura County Board of Supervisors, I am very concerned about the drafted ordinance for the regulation of hemp growth in our county. This ordinance seems to be forwarding the interests of the farmers and not protecting the rights of homeowners. I hope this board will take very seriously their duty to protect the rights and health of those residing, residing near crops. Problem number one, more oversight is required for this programmer. Farmers cannot be simply on their honor. A crop that has such strict oversight by the state and federal authorities needs to be closely monitored and regulated by someone who will actually take action when their crop is not in compliance. We need more than just a county employee checking and enforcing compliance. Problem number two, low odor varieties should not be exempt. There is no cannabis variety that doesn't smell. Problem number three, one-half mile is not enough of a buffer, especially with so many exemptions written into the ordinance. Non-flowering plants still smell. Research facilities should not be exempt. Problem number four, homeowner should be kept, homeowner should be able to keep the right to sue for nuisance. The county cannot take away an ordinance. Homeowners have the right to live and enjoy their, enjoy their property without nuisance of noxious odors. We should have the right to fight for clean air and health as, if it is being taken away. We call upon you to protect the residents as well as farmers. Thank you for making this necessary adjustment to the ordinance to protect the homeowners."
Thank you very much. And then we have Nicole Mukenga.
I have an email from Erin Mukenga.
Yes, and then it's signed Nicole.
Okay. "Mr. Williams and Board of Supervisors, while this issue has become exhausting and in spite of a serious world of events affecting us daily, it remains necessary to remind you how negatively the hemp farms impact our health and the quality of our produce. I live near the fields of the Tierra Rahada and our family is constantly believed by the smell which cause nausea and headaches. Our kids will not play outside due to the smell causing them to feel sick. Unless you live close to it and breathe it non-stop, it is hard to understand how the smell affects people. I cannot understand why an industry that can be easily located far away from residential area has to find itself here. Growing hemp here enriches a few and it hurts so many residents of Ventura County. For our health and peaceful enjoyment of our county, please require a one-mile setback from residence, schools, parks and playgrounds. A half-mile is not enough. No loopholes for greenhouses, breeders, potted or propagated cannabis plants. No exemptions for hemp research facilities, small parcels of five acres or less and low odor varieties. Absolutely no loopholes of any kind. We can't negotiate the air we breathe. Eliminate from the ordinance the nuisance clause. It silences the voices of the people who suffer from the hemp gases. The Agricultural Commissioner's website says its mission is to ensure the welfare of the public. I hope you will seriously consider the thousands who have been negatively affected by hemp cultivation near our neighborhoods."
Thank you very much. And then the last one is Jason Roberts.
Uh, "Board of Supervisors, I am very concerned about the drafted ordinance for the regulation of hemp growth in our county. The ordinance seems to be forwarding the interests of farmers and not protecting the rights of homeowners. I hope this board will take very seriously the duty to protect the rights and the health of those residing near crops. Problem number one, more oversight is required for this program. Farmers cannot simply on their honor. A crop that has such strict oversight by state and federal authorities needs to be closely monitored and regulated by someone who will actually take action when the crop is not in compliance. We need more than just a county employee checking and enforcing compliance. Problem number two, low odor varieties should not be exempt. There is no cannabis variety that doesn't smell. Problem number three, one-half mile is not enough of a buffer, especially when so many exemptions written into the ordinance. Non-flowering plants still smell. Research facilities should not be exempt. Problem number four, homeowner should be able to keep the right to sue for nuisance. The county cannot take away an ordinance. Homeowners have the right to live and enjoy their property without nuisance of noxious odors. We should have the right to fight for clean air and hea- and health if it is being taken away. We call upon you to protect the residents as well as farmers. Thank you for making the necessary adjustments to the ordinance to protect homeowners."
Thank you very much. And then that's Mr. Ed Williams. Our Ag Commissioner, make a comment. Uh, he is joining us right now. Thank you very much. I know that's a lot of talking, uh, for all those public comments, but it's important that we hear them. So thank you. So, we have Ed.
Can you hear me all right?
Hello, Mr. Williams. Thank you. Yes.
Hi, uh, I just wanted to let you know I'm available if you have any questions on any of the comments today.
Um, yes, if you could just make a comment on the public comments, how they can address you.
Uh, yeah, we have, uh, last Friday, we sent out, uh, notice to those folks that had, uh, signed up to receive, uh, information about the, uh, hemp, uh, ordinance, um, which included some revised draft language that has been put together for a proposed ordinance. Um, and we are seeking input, uh, on those, on that language, uh, from the public. And so that's the reason why we sent that information out. Um, it has not gone yet to the, um, planning commission. Uh, it is only in draft form at this point and so we're, we're hoping to get people. Um, as, as we're seeing, I'm sorry that you're getting all these comments. They weren't intended for the board necessarily, but, um, it's good that you're hearing from the public on this issue. And, uh, we are, uh, looking for input to, uh, craft the, the actual language that goes forward. So at this point, it's only a draft and, uh, we are posting it on our, uh, website. And also, uh, people can provide comments at V C A C H E M P at ventura.org. So V C A C hemp at ventura.org. So, uh, we welcome comments and, uh, we are getting, uh, quite a few comments at this time, as you can tell. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Appreciate it. Okay, that ends our public comments for today. We will now be moving on to our receiver report in regards to the COVID-19. Are we on our 14th week now? Holy moly. Um, with that, uh, with a lot of great things have been moving on with the COVID-19. I personally just wanna say thank you to all the efforts of everyone. It is 14 weeks of moving in a pandemic, which as everyone knows, is a lot of hours and time and worry for our community. Um, so I appreciate everyone's work on this and with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Powers.
Thank you Chair Long, board members, uh, community members. So, yes, a lot of, a lot of progress, a lot of things happening and, and as the supervisor said, a big thank you to the community for complying. That compliance with physical distancing is saving lives. There's no other way to say it. It's saving lives. And so we thank you. Uh, we're also, uh, moving forward, uh, gradually safely, uh, reopening, uh, businesses and our economy here, uh, with the state's guidance and with Dr. Levin's guidance. And so, uh, a, a lot of progress there. And we do continue to, to try to, to find that right balance. And, uh, you know, we have to adjust that and examine that every day. And so we look at the, at the numbers and, you know, the numbers have been looking good. Uh, we'll hear a report today that there's been an increase in the positive hospitalization, uh, numbers and that's a concern. And so that's something we need to look at. And though I will really commend, uh, public health and EMS and, uh, Dr. Levin, Rego for, uh, really jumping on any of these areas where there's an outbreak and there was one recently at a long-term care facility. And they identified it, tested everybody in the unit or in the process of testing everybody, uh, at those, at those facilities and, and then containing. You know, that's, that's what we need to do and that's, that's sort of our new normal. It is gonna happen and there'll be another one. And just if we take this approach, that'll, that's the best way to protect the community is to identify, be open about it. Uh, and public health will come in and test and, and, and contain and, and we'll keep moving forward. And it's just that open connection between the community and, and, uh, and the public health that's really, I think, helping us. And will continue to help us and, and as we go forward, including our, uh, expanding our testing capacity. So, uh, here's the, uh, outline for today. Uh, you can see we'll talk about our roadmap for, to reopening, new guidance from the state, uh, update on the measures. And the state is going to have a new, uh, does have, excuse me, a new, uh, monitoring, uh, program on its site for all the counties, for, on all the critical epidemiological public health, uh, measures. And so something we'll hear a report on as well. And then, uh, we'll also, your board has asked, uh, to, that we make sure to report a comparison with neighboring counties. So we'll have that for LA and Santa Barbara counties. Our expanded, expansion of testing and continuing to protect those, that vulnerable, those vulnerable populations in long-term care facilities, homeless and farm workers. And then, uh, we'll hear a report on, uh, in supporting our local businesses and, and people, uh, needing rental assistance with our, the board's rental assistance and business recovery programs. And then also, uh, walk you through, uh, just in an announce that we are going to reopen, uh, the, the county facilities uh, with condition, conditions, with physical distancing guidance in place. And so that will start, uh, next Monday and then that will mean that we'll have, uh, open, uh, board meetings again, but with physical distancing guidelines and seating spacing and so forth. So you'll get more details on that, but that's what we're going to cover, uh, here today. So we'll get to it. And you can see, uh, under the governor's, uh, different reopening stages. I won't go through all of them, but you see what's in, uh, stage two. And, you know, the retail and manufacturing and you can see the list there, places of worship, schools. You can see new news coming out about schools and the guidance coming down from the state, but still delegating, uh, a lot of responsibility to local school districts in, in coordination with our public health officer. Uh, we were, of course, the largest, uh, county to be accelerated into stage two and that allowed dine-in restaurants and hair salons and that's happening. And I just wanna stop and thank, uh, the businesses. We have our business ambassador program with the county and city. Uh, ambassadors going to check in on these businesses and, and the report that we get back is just great compliance, great spirit, both with the, the letter and the spirit, uh, of the requirements. So businesses are getting it and that's, that's making a huge difference. Uh, oop, a little bit fast. There we go. Uh, so, uh, just update on those numbers. Uh, you can see 6,392 businesses have registered, uh, as of, uh, this morning. So it's happening. It's gradually happening and, and safely. And so you can see, uh, some of the sectors, uh, over 1,400 retail operations, over 1,300 restaurants, 577 barber shops and hair salons and, uh, and you can see, you can see the rest there and 85, uh, pet grooming. And, uh, next up, there's, the governor announced, uh, guidance last Friday, uh, in about a dozen different sectors. Uh, but also this time giving, uh, more heads up and lead time so industries and sectors can prepare in advance, can review the guidance, understand how to implement it. And also, very importantly, that Dr. Levin can review the guidance and make sure, you know, he's comfortable with it and, and evaluate that in the context of our, of our numbers as well. So, uh, with that, I will, uh, turn it over to Dr. Levin. Thank you.
Good morning, Dr. Levin.
Good morning, Chair Long, uh, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Uh, I'm Dr. Robert Levin. I'm County Health Officer. Let's go to the next slide since this was.
Next slide? Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
So, the new state guidance was released, uh, last Friday. And, um, we are going through it. I'm looking through it. There's over 250 pages of guidance. I'm hoping to, to get through it by midday today. Uh, there is guidance for basically gambling, uh, also campgrounds, RV parks and outdoor recreation areas. We've already, uh, dealt with some of the RV parks in our county. There's guidance for day camps and, and this guidance, these are all things that, that we're looking at to see if we believe that they're safe to open in our county. Uh, family entertainment centers, fitness facilities, uh, gyms, et cetera. Hotels, museums and galleries, zoos and aquariums. We're also looking at music, film and television production. There, uh, is an issue of professional sports without audiences. And this is of particular concern because we have a training camp that comes to Oxnard every year. And then restaurants, bars and wineries. And, uh, some of these have already been opened because they have major components of, of food establishments attached to them. But these are more with accents upon the, the bars and wineries. I think I.
Can you? Oh, go ahead.
Okay. But there are certain things that are still not allowed by the state. And, uh, those are personal services such as nail salons, tattoo parlors, body waxing. And then there are, are indoor playgrounds, which are still, we still have no guidance on and therefore we cannot, uh, make, uh, any pronouncements on. Those are bounce centers and laser tag. Uh, movie theaters and live theaters are also awaiting guidance. Saunas and steam rooms, nightclubs, concert venues, all of these things, as I go through them, you can see that these are, are activities that tend to bring people together and people from different backgrounds, uh, different families, different households together. Uh, and oftentimes from different counties. The festivals, theme parks and also higher education. We're waiting to hear more about higher education from the state. And those are my comments for today.
Thank you very much. I know there is a lot of work that goes along with this, uh, the state. Thank you. They, a week ago, they had taken suggestions from the county supervisors along with public health in regards to giving us more warning so that we can better prepare. And last Thursday, uh, myself, Mike Powers, had joined in an executive director meeting with Dr. Galley as he explained these items, um, which I think is great. And we know we have to listen to our local, uh, public health because local control is so important. Um, but I did want, I hadn't had a chance to talk with you and I wanted to let you know that we also asked for the next, you know, the. this isn't a fabulous list, but the next list we were looking at was weddings because those can be a faith-based ritual, very similar to indoors if it was outdoors or a different location than a church. Kid sports, as we all know, if you have a kid in your house, it's going crazy because they've been there for 14 weeks. Going out for, to kick a ball or do a dance class would be amazing to their mental health and also to their parents' mental health. And playgrounds, it's hard to go to a park and not be able to go on a swing or so forth. And then also, we were contacted in regards to tattoo removal. And that's for those that have wanted to get a job, but because of the tattoo that they had, they weren't able to apply in trying to get people up and working. So I wanted to ask that one. And then also, my own personal, is DMV, behind-the-wheel testing. I know there's many of people that need a driver's license. So hopefully, the state will come to figure that one out. But that's not our worry. But I didn't know if there, I didn't know if your feelings were those, where there's something that we need to be asking for as well.
We're waiting for state guidance on a lot of those things. I do have personal feelings for a number of those things. In terms of questions, this would normally be the time when the supervisors would ask questions of me. But I think some of the things that Rego, Mr. Vargas is going to deal with will probably open the door to some of those more. So I'm going to stay. And when Mr. Vargas is finished with his presentation, I will help address those questions as well, if that's all right.
No, that's perfect. Supervisors on our Zoom, do you have any questions for Dr. Levin now? Or if you want to wait, you can as well.
Madam Chair.
Doctor, yes, Dr. Zaragoza, Supervisor Zaragoza.
I'm a doctor too, that's okay. No, I, Dr. Levin, and I know that this is a really, probably an item that's really, really tough. And that's the nail salons. And I've been asked over and over again about the nail salons. That's really important. In fact, I had this young lady, she was about 85 years old, call me up, that she needed her nails done because apparently she got to the point where her nails cannot, she needs to have them done because they're very fragile and so forth. So the nail salon, I've had a lot of calls on that, you know, that they, any people need to have, or the young ladies need to have their nails done and pedicures and so forth. So that's really what I've heard a lot, Dr. Levin. And I know we have to follow state guidelines, but that's something that I think is extremely important to, for the community.
Very good comment. And the other supervisors? I did want to note that. Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
Just real quick, I just wanted to ask, because I get this question, Dr. Levin. Day camps opened up, which I think bring children together from various families. But team sports have not opened up, you know, kid sports. Can you help me with the distinction there, please? So I can explain that.
Well, the distinction, of course, was made up at the state. They neglected to ask me about it. The, so I could only guess, you know, what the distinction is. I think.
Okay, that's fine. So it's just the fact that the state still has the restriction on team sports.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other supervisors? I do want to let the supervisors know that we did submit a letter up to the state about graduations. We were not able to get anything changed, but we did voice our opinion on it. And I wanted to make sure, since our last meeting, that we followed up. So thank you.
I have two questions, Supervisor Long.
Yes, Supervisor Parks.
One question, we are seeing, as mentioned by Mike Powers, an uptick in our numbers. And I'm wondering if you see that accounted for by other than one particular long-term care facility?
I do. I see that, and I don't want to steal Mr. Vargas's thunder on this issue, but I do see that there is an uptick which cannot be explained solely by that one long-term care facility.
Okay, and we'll wait for Rego for the rest of the news on that, I guess. The other question I have is, the state requires masks for hair salons, as I recall. And I'm just wondering, that's something now that is part of our requirements for hair salons? And if there are other specific activities that we would also recommend masks for?
I'm not completely finished, excuse me, looking at all of the guidances. However, in a number of the guidances that I've looked at, the state has indicated preferences to various degrees as to the mask usage. And wherever the state goes in those directions, I, of course, and our county will follow precisely.
Okay, and not in the other direction? We're not going to be more restrictive to this than what the state requires when it comes to masks at this point in time?
At this point, no. But the state is working on, it is, it is, it's unclear to me exactly where this is at. So I'll start, I'll finish my original sentence. The state is working on mask guidance again, updating their mask guidance. There's been a back and forth between the state and the health officers. And it's not clear to me at all where along the spectrum of comments about masks this state will land. If they will say, there's no change in our previous guidance all the way through ordering mask usage. It's just totally unclear at this point.
Okay, and I know there's differing opinions out there, and mine differs. I'd like to see people wearing masks, particularly in grocery stores, restaurants, when they're in close areas together and gatherings. I am concerned about potential for significant increases in tests, positive tests due to the protests, as I think a lot of us are. The last question I have is related to, as we mentioned, hair salons are allowed, but not getting your nails done. It doesn't seem like there is, to me, that much risk between the two. Do you see where nails being done is more riskier than getting your hair cut?
You know, I've never actually seen the process of what happens in a nail salon.
Oh, we got to get you there.
However, this decision does reside with the state. And I'm not sure what the reasoning was behind that distinction. But I do want to, go ahead.
They're both, you're in very close contact, obviously, with someone's.
That's true. I do want to go back to a comment you just made, which I think is an important comment. And that is whatever rise that we may be seeing in our cases of COVID-positive hospitalizations. And I think that's a very important number, very important for us to look at. And its association with protests that have happened over the weekend. I don't think there's any association with that. It is too short a period of time. So if we're seeing an increase in cases, it is related to the Memorial Day weekend or other opening ups, other liberalizings that we've done, which are about two weeks back, starting or even earlier. And so I think any changes we're seeing would be related to those things. We haven't had time yet to see if there's a change related to any protests.
Thank you. You know, I'm sorry to take up so much time, but I had asked a question about a month ago regarding blood type. And I think since then, there is actually some more studies that have come out indicating that some blood types, I think A, blood type A may be more capable of getting COVID than other blood types?
You know, I have not kept up on that information, but I will look into it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Dr. Levin, I do want to say thank you. We've had several people contact my office and state that because they're 70 years old, they were told they had to stay home. And now they are able to get out and about, and they really appreciate all that. And then also, since the last meeting we had, we had the long-term facility residents be able to have visitation rights. And so that has been huge for just the morale for our seniors and others that are in those facilities. So I just want to say thank you. It's greatly appreciated they're following the ordinances, from what I understand, which is really important.
Good, thank you very much.
All right, next up is Rego Vargas.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board and Mr. Powers staff. Rego Vargas, again, Public Health Director for County Ventura. And so before I go through the slides, I would like to give you an update for today's numbers, at least some of them so far. We're going to report 40 new positive cases, bringing us close to 1,400 cases in Ventura County. Over the weekend, we reported yesterday 80. So that's over three days. So the 40 is a little bit on the higher side from our daily average. So that's definitely something we're going to continue looking at. We are also reporting 493, so almost 500 newly tested individuals since yesterday. Brings our total to almost, well, actually, a little bit over 33,000 Ventura County residents, about 33,200 residents of Ventura County that have gotten tested. And so that's a good indication about our testing capacity. Our positive rate is still around 4%, given the high volume of testing that's being done. So that's on the good news side. The concerning number, I don't have an update today. I have my cell here to check in case it comes in, is the number of positive COVID individuals that are in the hospital. Yesterday's number was of concern. It was 43. That did take into account nine seniors from a long-term care facility in Ventura that were transported to the hospital and they were admitted as actual patients. It wasn't part of the holding unit arrangement that we have with the hospital. So therefore, that number went up by those nine. So that's still about 35 hospitalized positive individuals, even when you take into account those nine from the senior living facility. So that number does fluctuate. Definitely 35 is on the high side. And so we're closely monitoring that number, as has been indicated. And in case today's number comes in, I'll report that as well. But yesterday, again, was at 43. And nine of those were from the long-term care facility in Ventura. So that's in terms of our numbers for today. So with that, I'd like to go through the slides. Someone.
There we go.
All right. And I don't think this one has a laser. So this slide we've shown below, but I wanted to highlight just a little bit more detail. Thank you. So, you know, one of the main metrics around our accelerated reopening is around our Epi data, our numbers with regard to positive tests. And so there's, with some of these metrics, actually, most of them have two. You got to meet one or the other. And so we were meeting one, but not the other. So testing positivity rate in the last seven days, we're at 2.5. And that's good. It could go up to 8%. But the number of COVID-positive tests in the past 14 days, the state would like us to be at less than 25 per 100,000 resident. And we're, as of yesterday, we were at 33. So again, you know, something to, obviously, for us to continue to monitor. We're still good on this overall indicator because you got to meet it on one or the other. And even if we were to not meet it in both areas, it's not that right away we would have to, you know, pull back. It's just that if it continues to be a trend where we would not meet either of these, then it would be a particular concern. So this slide, what I wanted to point out.
For the public?
Yes.
And the comment?
For the public, can you tell us what the positivity rate is?
Yeah, that's the total number of positive tests in the last seven days, based on the number of tests done and the positive tests. So we have, while we have an overall, around approximate 4% positive rate of all testing, the state wants us to look, in particular in this measure, for the last seven days. And so of all the tests that have been done in the last seven days, our positivity rate, or those that are positive, is 2.5. So it's good. Again, they allow up to 8% rate because they understand that increased testing is going to capture more individuals that are testing positive. And they want us to do it in the last seven days versus since the inception. And this slide is part of our dashboard. So just to draw the audience's attention, it actually reports positive tests, tests performed overall and tests performed, the rolling average. So so far, we're averaging around 500. But there's been days where we've reported close to 900 tests done daily. And so the numbers here are, not all the test results, especially from the private labs, are in. Therefore, you know, these numbers are more stable. And then as we get the results in from the labs all in in the next three or four days, then the current date numbers will increase closer to this. So we're averaging around 500. But again, the testing capacity has been greatly increased. And our positive test numbers are very good still. Now, in terms of that trigger that's been mentioned, that the state is looking at all counties. And they have a public dashboard showing each county, how we're doing with the metrics. We have our very specific ones in all three areas. The Epi indicators, the healthcare indicators and the public health overall indicators in terms of our contact tracing ability. Everything still is very much looking good, where we don't see an issue of us not meeting the metrics and having to trigger an adjustment to our current process. So this one is the particular concern, again, it is related to the outbreak in the long-term care facility, but the increase is not solely due to that outbreak. And so currently, the hospitalization stability number, we're not meeting. And again, we actually await for today's results as well as any trend. But this measure is that we should have less than a 5% increase in total hospitalized patients in the last seven days. And with the, originally, it was 12 long-term care facility patients that went into the hospital over the weekend. And with yesterday's count, there was nine of them were still in the hospital. So that's where we get the 43 minus the nine for the 35 actual count if we were to take into account the long-term care facility. So this is of concern. The other, this one has or, the other is no more than total of 20 positive patients in the hospital for the last 14 days. And this, I think, was an original measure mostly meant for small northern counties that, you know, had, didn't even have 10 people in the hospital or even cases for that matter. And so the top number is really more the one that we're going to be following. No more than a 5% increase in hospitalization. And with the weekend's activity, we were at 15, a little bit over 15%. And again, the expected is no more than 5% increase in people hospitalized.
Can I ask a question? In regards to the ICU, isn't it, my understanding is that it's more critical that if you look at our numbers, it's pretty even in the ICU? Because that's where our really critical patients are. And that you're stating, if I'm understanding the data correctly, those that have been put into the hospital maybe have been removed from a long care facility so that they do not get COVID to the other residents there? They might not have needed to be hospitalized? Is that correct?
Well, nine, at least nine of the 12 have stayed in the hospital. So they were in pretty serious condition, not necessarily an ICU, all of them. And in fact, probably a few of them went from, you know, we've been averaging around 11, as you can see. a few of them went from, you know, we've been averaging around 11, as you can see, 10, and then we went up to 14. So some of those that were transferred to the hospital were admitted, the criteria to be acute patients. And then I don't have the number of that may have contributed to the ones in ICU. But that number, the good news is, you're right, it didn't increase sharply as-
No.
-as our total hospitalized number.
No. And so that's what I'm trying to understand when we have guidances from the state as to our surge capacity for hospitals. We're not even close to the 800 more than the beds that we need to be. So my question is this, I understand the concern of being in a hospital, but I thought that it was more important that they're not in the ICU.
Yes.
Because that means their health has gone really bad, from my understanding, if you put it in layman's terms.
Yes.
And so I just want to know, as a society, as a community, when we see all these numbers coming out, where are we really wanting to look to make sure that our community, we're doing the right things?
Yeah.
I guess is what I get questions on that.
Definitely. And so this one, I think, we've been consistent in reporting both hospitalized and ICU. And so, yes, thank you for reminding me to point out the ICU number. While it took a, an increase is not a dramatic increase, but definitely both are very important.
Right. Because also, we have a larger amount of testing positive, because we have more tests out there. But it doesn't mean that they're coming into the hospital and that they need those services. They're actually getting better. And they're isolating at home, and they're healing, and they're getting past this. And when I saw 33 days as the doubling rate, when in the way beginning, I think it was 14 or shorter, I'm thinking, okay, as a community, we are getting through this. And I don't, I want to make sure we're stating the right messages, as everyone's trying to be their own doctor now, because we read all on social media.
I would like to comment a little bit. I wouldn't be doing my job if I was not looking for signs that we're heading, we're veering off into a wrong direction. And so I am very concerned that we are heading in a wrong direction. The, there is a positive way to interpret this, but it is theory based on theory based on theory. And that is, if you look at, well, where's the pointer?
The pointer?
This is the- Oh, great, thanks. If you look at the number of patients in the ICU at 14, this is not that different. But we see 14 of 43. But if you look back here, 14 of 29, 15 of 26, 15 of 24. So it is possible that these are patients that have been admitted countywide with COVID that are not as ill as many of these patients were. And so that's my optimistic pie in the sky hope, and that this isn't a direction, but rather, we're seeing just a choice that clinicians have made to admit patients to the hospital that weren't quite as ill. I don't have a lot of faith in that, but I'm hopeful that that explains it.
Well, and the other question that we receive is the fact that maybe they were tested positive for COVID but have other-
Comorbidities, yeah.
Thank you. Comorbidities in which they're watching. So that's, that was also a question.
It is possible. And yet, that those comorbidities have not appeared to contribute to the infection such that they require being placed in the ICU.
Right, right. Okay. I just think it's a good dialogue that we have this back and forth, so that our community that is watching can understand the decisions and points that we're watching. Supervisors, do you have any questions on this? I know Rico has a couple more slides, but I just wanted to make sure we talked about that.
Yeah, thank you, suppose.
Okay.
I think that was the last one. Oh, yeah, this is the last one. Just the slide we shared before with your board's interest in terms of comparing just with our neighboring counties in the south and to the north. And these are our latest numbers. Draw your attention to the bottom numbers. In terms of percent positive, I indicated that we're still around 4% of, this is as of yesterday. So out of the total number of tests that we've done, our rate is 4.1. Santa Barbara is 8.1. And everybody has a 0.1 here. LA has 9.1, so rounding off though, 4, 8, and 9%. So we're still good comparing, compared to our neighboring counties in terms of total positive, not just in the last seven days. And then in terms of percent deaths, you know, very, very important, our 35 deaths are still, that's the number we're going to report today, still 35. We may have some to report tomorrow. The, we're at 2.6 of all our positive individuals. Those 35 reflect the 2.6% of deaths compared to Santa Barbara actually has a lower rate, in part due to the very high number of individuals that they have that are in the prison. And so they're ill, but not necessarily in the hospital and dying. LA, though, has a higher rate of deaths than ours. They're at 4% and we're at around 2.5%.
And another note to put on here is that Ventura and Santa Barbara are in the regional phase, and Los Angeles County is not, right?
Actually, I believe they've now met the criteria to also be in the accelerated opening, and they've opened malls and other restaurants as well.
Okay, so they just started?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that's our last slide. So any questions for Dr. Levin or I before we turn it over to Mr. Zimmerman?
Supervisors, any questions? I'm hearing none.
Okay, all right.
So you did a fabulous job and answered all of our questions.
Team of perfect-
We always have a lot of questions.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, members of the board. Mr. Powers, Barry Zimmerman, just a quick update on our testing there. As the slide presents, we now have 13 locations. As I reported out last time, we were planning to open an Oxnard College location, which was successful and launched this Saturday. And it will have weekend coverage, so that has been a big benefit to the community. And a lot of hard work gone out from our partner agencies within the county. Public Works is helping manage that site, and so give a shout out to them. And always with the OES team, who does such a good logistics job for us to make this happen, has been a great benefit. The, I was there Saturday, and we set it up Friday, opened Saturday with minimal advertising. And halfway through, we had about 150 cars already go through. So it is a very active site there. So out of the 13 locations, our drive-in, no appointment sites seem to be the most accessible and the most in demand right now. So we'll continue to monitor those activities and how we're going, not only in those sites, but all others as we continue the testing and the outreach effort to notify individuals of availability. This is just the trend charts that we have, one week by week, but the cumulative amount, we're almost at 35,000 individuals being tested. And the slope of that curve is continuing to go upward. And so more and more are taking advantage of that. That's what we have at this point in time, and we'll continue to monitor and keep this activity going.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, any questions for Mr. Zimmerman? I just personally want to say thank you very much for the team to reaching out to the Santa Clara Valley and making sure that it is open at different times. That's been crucial to make sure that we get everybody, everyone's on the same schedule. And then also, I just have heard people going in to test after maybe they've been to a peaceful protest, or wanting to visit a family member at the long-term care center and so forth. So thank you for making sure that that's available. I think it's really important for the team, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And also want to recognize Patrick Maynard and the OES team for helping to set up these test sites, and particularly the one in Oxnard as well. So it's amazing the logistical work that they do. So now to hear about our, we'll hear about our vulnerable population from Melissa Livingston, HSA Director.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, and our residents of Ventura County. For the record, Melissa Livingston, Acting Director of the Human Service Agency. I get the pleasure to do this slide this week, and this is just really a celebration. It's a celebration of the phenomenal work that we have done as a community. It's representational of our county employees, our county family. It's representational of our disaster service workers, community groups that we partner with, and volunteers. And so we want to celebrate that. And beginning with, just recognizing that each month, for the last three months, starting in April, we've received an infusion that's impacted almost 21,000 families that are receiving CalFresh grants. And they've gotten an additional allotment, which has allowed them to put more food on the table and move from not just a supplemental food program, but one closer to helping them actually feed their families. And so that's been putting in about $3.7 million a month back into our economy for the past three months. We're very appreciative of that. We're also appreciative of the work of our Farm Worker Resource Program Team and their collaborative group that continues to do outreach. We've distributed over 90,000 informational flyers related to COVID safety, to farm workers and to growers. An additional 20,000 flyers are being distributed to farm workers that relates to face mask distribution and testing availability. And we have made over 26,000 calls that were wellbeing calls, recognizing our most vulnerable population, checking in on their safety and wellbeing, and providing support to them for the most basic needs. A lot of those were referrals for food. Additionally, a million masks have been distributed to frontline workers, including farm workers and grocers. And to date, we have served 787,783 meals, served to over 16,000 vulnerable seniors and individuals with disabilities and access to functional needs. And that was as of June the 7th. We, our Great Plates Program continues through tomorrow, and we'll be seeking to see if that program is extended. If not, we'll be working on other solutions to continue to address the needs of our older adults and individuals with disabilities at this time. And then lastly, 330 at-risk individuals are currently still sheltered through our room, Project Room Key project. Over 40 of those individuals who have previously been in those motels have been, have secured housing or moved to other shelters. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Supervisors, any questions? I think this is just an amazing amount of work that has been put in to do all this by so many volunteers and our staff and nonprofits. It's been very impressive. The strain or just work associated with the Project Room Key, trying to get that 24 hours with a very vulnerable population is extremely intensive. And so I really appreciate all the work that's been going on there. I mean, every single one, you can bring out points about what amazing things are being done in this county and working together. So I really do appreciate it. And also with 211 helping us as well. I think it's very, very important for our community, as, that's what we're here for, right?
That's right.
The umbrella service for our community to make sure the health and wellbeing is here. So I appreciate it. Mr. Powers?
I would just add on to that, Chair Long, that intensive is the right word. And it's regular, everyday healthcare, mental healthcare, social service, connecting to service, looking for housing, that's going on all the time, seven days a week. And I know they're working on the gradual exit strategy there, which is good, which is healthy for the whole project and the system and the staff, of course. And also want to recognize, yes, the volunteers have done an amazing job, but also our county employees who have been reassigned as disaster service workers. There's over 350 county employees who've been reassigned, and they're doing it with great spirit. And just really appreciate their dedication, their positive attitude, and the departments for, you know, allowing them to do that, because everybody's got lots of work to do, but, and it is a strain on them. But it's the right thing. And so we really appreciate all those disaster service worker county employees.
Well, and also, as was stated, that we'll be opening back up. How do we move forward to provide those services and still get everything done?
Yep, more balancing to come, to be sure. No, that's exactly right. More to come on that. Next up, want to give you an overview, or have Melissa give you an overview of the rental assistance program that your board approved in concept last week. And then we'll also hear about the business assistance program. We wanted to give you a report as part of this update on COVID response. The actual item will be heard as Item 43 immediately following this item, but we wanted to give you and the community an update on just how the programs work as part of our overall COVID response. So Mel, take it away.
Thank you. Oops. So I'll just give a high level, since we're going to be doing a presentation shortly. But the rental assistance program is focusing on stabilizing our low-income residents who have been the most impacted by this event. Those individuals that, mostly those individuals who are impacted, almost 100,000 individuals who are impacted through loss of industry sector jobs that are the lowest paying in Ventura County. And so we're focusing on that lower income level, those individuals that are challenged with making ongoing monthly rent payments and may be at risk of housing instability, as well as potential risk of homelessness. The program is going to have two rounds, and we'll be announcing the timeline for the first round. And $5 million will be allocated to each of those, each round. The grants that will be administered will be either 1,500 for a household that has a studio or a one-bedroom apartment, or 2,500 for those that have a two-bedroom or larger rental engagement. Payment will be made up to two months for rent. It will not necessarily cover the full amount of rent, but it's recognized that this is a bridge to allow some level of relief that will give relief to the renter, as well as give relief to the property owner, which means that we could be putting as much as $3,000 to $5,000 in households' hands in support of this program. The program will also include farm workers impacted by lost wages due to the reduced demand for agricultural products, who may have experienced a lag in work hours. As it relates to the eligibility criteria, priority is going to be given to residents from 0 to 50 of the average median income, and that would be income level of no income all the way up to about 74,500. And that, the average median income is based upon number of individuals in a household. So that range is reflective from one individual all the way up to eight individuals. There will be an income verification to ensure the average median income and verification of that, and that will be done through a variety of different documentation forms, such as pay stubs, bank statements, tax returns, other related income documentation. There will be a requirement of proof of residency. That could take a variety of forms. It could be a government ID card. It could be a tax return. It could be a utility bill. It could be an essential worker card. And there will also be a landlord attestation process attesting to the rental agreement with the tenant. So far, as far as timeline, we plan on, based on your board's approval, to begin outreach starting tomorrow. And that outreach, I will be covering that in a following slide as to how that outreach will actually look. But we have already prepared the VC emergency website to be the place that folks go to access this program. We already have information out there as to who's, how you can become eligible, how to apply, you know, what is the eligibility criteria, what do you need from a documentation perspective. There are frequently asked questions that are there for the tenants, as well as the landlords. So that will begin tomorrow. Then on June the 17th through July 1st, we will actually begin the online application. So individuals may go online and actually file their application at that point in time, again, through vcemergency.com/rent, or they can go to ventura.org/rent. And both those routes will take them to the application process. There will be, the application will have an ability to- There will be, the application will have an ability to email back to the applicant information that they have, we have received their application. It'll also provide some insight into whether they're actually eligible or not, if they've met their criteria. We then will begin an evaluation process that will begin on July 1st through July 10th, where we'll actually evaluate the applications. And as shared, we're looking at the average median income from 0 to 50, being the lowest level of income. But we're also opening up the program to 51% to 80% average median income. But we will make a priority for that lowest level first. So, if the majority, if we have applications of both those average median income ranges, we'll be taking those all into consideration. In recognition that the first round is 5 million, we're looking at maybe about 1,000 households is the threshold by which we think that we can support this program. We won't know until we open it up and we actually see the need, but we're going to be looking at about 1,000. If we have more applications than we have funding for the first round, we'll be leveraging a lottery tool to help us make a determination about how those get distributed. But certainly, once those applications are in our system, if we provide this second round as anticipated, we would keep those individuals in the queue for consideration for that second round. So, we will finalize on July 10th. Those individuals or households that are going to be the grant recipients of this, they'll be notified. And then, on July 24th, we will actually issue the funding in paper checks that will be sent to actually the landlords.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza, question?
Melissa, I was looking at your PowerPoint, but I noticed that you have it in Spanish too, which is really, it's great. My question is, how are you going to convey that information? Is it going to be by radio? Is it going to be by nonprofit organizations like, for example, a concilium? Because some individuals in the Spanish community do not have the ability to use a computer or to get that information. So, how are you going to convey that information to the Spanish-speaking community?
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. So, you just let me segue into the next slide, which was an outline of our outreach and communication. And so, we will be doing a very extensive community outreach in English, Spanish, and other indigenous languages. We've already begun that outreach. The Farmworker Resource Program team specifically has connected with many of those groups that you've mentioned and others. We have a large cadre of community groups and nonprofits that we work with, and so, we'll be reaching out within that entire network to get the word out. But we will be using all mediums as possible. We'll be using print, radio, television, social media formats. We'll be doing videos for those indigenous languages that don't have a written language, as you've seen us do very well for many of the other aspects of this pandemic. We'll be partnering with other county agencies in support of this, the cities, community partners, to encourage individuals to apply, to med referrals to our program. We'll also be doing some outreach to help specifically with our farmworker program to ensure that those individuals are able to obtain and identify the types of documentation they'll need in advance to application.
All I had to do was wait a little bit, huh? All I had to do was wait a little bit, and you had it there. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any supervisors, any other questions?
This is Steve Bennett.
Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
I don't have a question, but I did want to say how much I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to watching the rental assistance program move forward. And you've done a great job of trying to make that a fair and open process, and so, I look forward to it, and good luck with that important program.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Okay, next up, we'll hear from Paul Stamper on our business assistance program, your board's program.
Good morning, Chair Long, board members, CEO Powers. I'm Paul Stamper, Deputy Executive Officer for the county. And the business grant program is the companion program with the rental assistance program. Many of our timeframes and approaches are similar, as you'll see. We're going to walk through some of the overview of that program and be happy to take questions at the end. So, this program is intended for small businesses and nonprofits. There's a total of $10 million, with $5 million of that in the first round, and it's really seeking to help local businesses retain jobs and perhaps use that money with reopening costs and other impacts from COVID. Recipients will receive $5,000 each, and there's going to be a weighted distribution by population of the cities within our counties. We're anticipating a lottery process as well. If we have more than 1,000 applicants, we'll be using that. And one of the keys with this program is we're leveraging existing infrastructure through our partners at the Ventura County Community Foundation. They already have a rapid response fund in place, and so, we're leveraging that whole infrastructure and operation to get the money out and anticipate. You'll be hearing later from the CEO Vanessa Bectell to talk a little bit more about that in detail. In terms of eligibility criteria for businesses, we're asking that businesses apply who have a business license in the county of Ventura and have been in place for at least six months prior to the pandemic. And we're looking for an annual revenue between $25,000 and $2 million. Again, we're aiming for the small businesses in our community, and those businesses, we're asking that they register at VC opens or VC reopens if they're eligible. If no guidance has been released yet and they're not allowed to reopen, then we're encouraging them to go to that same website and sign up for updates. We have almost 1,000 businesses that have done that already. And during that eligibility process, we'll be asking for them to describe the negative impacts from COVID-19 and asking to disclose if they've received any SBA loans. That will enter into our lottery process in terms of, we really want to get the money to those that fell through the cracks and maybe didn't get a loan in this process. So, as far as some timelines, we're also looking to open our campaign for community outreach tomorrow, and the online application will become available on June 17th. We'll be open for two weeks, and during that time, be hosting a series of three different virtual public outreach meetings. And after multiple other communication and outreach activities, which I'll describe on the next slide, then we'll have a two-week period of time for evaluation. And our other community partners with Economic Development Collaborative and Women's Economic Ventures will help make sure that those applicants meet the eligibility criteria, make those recommendations going forward, and then through the VCCF process, the funding will occur. We're looking at by August 15th to issue the grantees their money. As far as our outreach and communication plan, again, we'll use both English, Spanish, and other languages as well, using print, radio, TV, social media, and those virtual public meetings that I described. We also have a robust set of partners in our community through our chambers, some of the organizations I already mentioned, our local cities, and the ambassador program that CEO Powers has referred to. They are out talking to businesses every day, and they will all be part of our outreach campaign as we move forward. And again, I want to encourage people, or businesses rather, that are interested in this program to go sign up or register at VC reopens, because all of those businesses, again, the more than 6,000 that have already registered and the 1,000 that have signed up for updates, will all receive direct email communication about the program, the application window, and details about where to apply. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Paul, thank you for the outreach and communications. I know that we had some concerns from the Oxtard Downtowners with ABEL, and I know that you've been working with them, and I think that's great that they'll understand that they have the ability to apply for some of that assistance there in downtown Oxtard. Thank you for that. I just wanted to share that because I know we've had some of the council members from Oxtard share some concerns about assisting some of the Downtowners in Oxtard. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Correct, and it's important to understand that these programs are not just in the county unincorporated areas, but within the cities as well. And so, we'll be pushing out this information to all of our city partners as well so they can communicate. I know as on the EDC Executive Board and our Board of Directors meetings, where we talked about these programs and the fact that we want to roll this out as quickly as possible. So, I appreciate the moving the date up to June 17th to make sure that we get this dispersed as quickly as possible, but for the full range of our county, not only in the west end, but also in the east end and every other end that you want to go to. So, thank you. Supervisor Parks, do you have a question or comment? I thought I heard you.
I have a statement.
Okay.
And that is, I'd like to be able to see these funds distributed specifically to disadvantaged communities, so they should be high on our priority list. You know, the county has never, that I know of, been in a situation where we have funds that we can help to reinvest into our communities. And while they are needed tremendously, and there will be significantly more demand than there are funds, this gives us an opportunity, again, to go back to the county's mission. And as I look now, we see these protests and how money going to those businesses can reinvest into those communities. We know that it will help to get people back to work. It helps in employment. It helps in healthcare. It has a lot of benefits that this investment can achieve, while small relatively per entity. I would like to see that criteria to look at giving more points to businesses in disadvantaged communities, and I would like them to use the Calen virus screen, which is already found, and you know, it's a great resource that has already identified those communities. So, that would be something that I request. I understand that is not, at this point, one of those criterias. Is that correct?
So, right now, we are aiming for those businesses that have fallen through the cracks, and the way that we're primarily doing that is by focusing on the annual revenues and ensuring that every community across the county is going to be represented as recipients. So, we are definitely aiming for that, but we welcome your input and can continue with that.
For example, you know, a person can have an at-home business out of their garage with their family, and you know, they're hurting, but they're located in a high-income area. And to me, you get so many more, so much more bang for your buck if you can target them towards those. So, that would be something that I would ask my board members if they agree that that is an appropriate criteria that should be incorporated into the distribution.
Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Long. Thank you, Supervisor Parks. And so, that's a good point where we can make sure to bring that up when we come to Item 43 and put that on as a part of a recommendation. I do want to just mention though, too, that per your board's direction, the criteria will also be focused on low-income jobs, areas in hospitality, retail industry, and recreation services. So, we're looking at issues of wage and income as well and equity. So, but definitely, we'll make sure to bring that up on Item 43. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I agree, but I think it's an important issue, you know. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisors Zaragoza. And also, just to highlight on a screen that we had beforehand, we've basically, 1,500 businesses have registered to open since last week, and I think that is huge. And this program will just step that up even more. Getting people, the economy and the salaries for our employees to be working is really important to make sure that they're taking care of their health and their well-being. So, I appreciate this program specifically is really going to be beneficial for our community. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Next up, one of the things we've talked about, and your board has talked about, is relief for our businesses. And you know, we've just been thinking and working with Kim Pearlheart from RMA and Fire Chief, as well as Public Works, and thinking that during these tough times, you know, the last thing a business wants to get is a bill from the county for inspection and so forth. So, the team has worked very quickly, along with Scott Powers and Laura Bravo, to develop a fee waiver program, and so, I'd like Kim to present it for your board.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Chair Long and Mr. Powers, and members of the board, Kim Pearlheart, the Director of the Resource Management Agency. I do want to say that in working with the CEO's office, and it's going to be on Agenda Item 60 at 11 o'clock this afternoon, time certain, we are going to be recommending reductions or waivers to our programs, both in the Resource Management Agency and to the Fire Protection District for inspection fees. We have really taken to heart the impact of COVID-19 on our local businesses, and we really wanted to make sure that we are looking through the fees that we are charging and going through very carefully with our 2,400 hazardous material facility inspections, right, and over 2,200 restaurants, and making sure that we are able to offer a fee reduction. So, we are offering a 25% fee reduction to those businesses, and those includes organized camps and bars, and all of our manufacturers that were closed for several months, our research and development folks, our packing houses. So, all of those invoices that go out, and typically, they are an annual invoice, we're going to offer a 300, I mean, a 25% reduction on those. And that equals $389.57 waived for all facilities for our hazardous materials. So, that's a great reduction for them. And then, we are also going to waive up to $160,000 in late fees. So, we don't want to charge anybody late fees. We understand that it's been difficult right now to pay, and so, we are going to be waiving those and giving that authority to the Environmental Health Director to make sure that he's able to waive those fees as those situations arise. We are also, just for the Fire Protection District, so they are planning on waiving licensed facility containment sleeping units, and those are such for long-term care facilities, and also for the temporary tents. And so, the temporary tents, I was downtown Ventura yesterday, and you can see those temporary tents that the folks that are allowed 50% of restaurant capacities to open outside. So, the Fire Protection District didn't want them to be penalized for having additional seating. So, that looks like that program is working well, and so, that's also part of what they are requesting to be waived. And all told, that would be $1.65 million in anticipated relief if it's approved by the board. So, I'm available for questions on that.
Okay. I'll open this up to any supervisors. Any comments, questions, statements? This, to me, is a great program to help our businesses. We wanted to get them up and running and to understand what they're facing is really, thank you for looking at this. I know our board has asked, how can we support our businesses? What is it that we can do? So, coming back with this, I think this is a very promising way to be assisting them.
I agree.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Long, and we're going to recommend to your board in the future that that $1.65 million be funded either through CARES Act funding if it's eligible, and if not, through your board's assigned reserve. So, with that, next up, with this gradual phased reopening here locally, we felt it was appropriate to reopen our county facilities as well as our board meetings. And so, of course, with the physical distancing guidelines, so Sean Otten, our HR Director, has been leading a county committee of leaders in our county workforce, so I'd like him to give an update on where we're at, I think, almost.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. As Mr. Powers just mentioned, that we've been working very closely with Dr. Levin, the GSA Department, Dave Sasek, as well as the county departments who are represented in our work groups that we've held. And we feel that we're ready at this moment to open up on June 15th. So, we anticipate opening up, but we, all the county buildings and facilities for public entry by the public for services on site. Now, we will continue to conduct temperature screenings at high-traffic facilities as we have been doing for the last several months. And we also will continue to adhere to the physical distancing protocols that we've been doing. So, that includes signage, the marks about the spacing, and also, the physical barriers such as the plexiglass and so forth. And while certainly, public, I mean, the face coverings are not mandatory, we support the employees and the members of the public to have face coverings as they desire, unless, of course, a particular position requires face coverings and PPEs such as the hospital the hospital or frontline workers. So, the first board meeting that will be open to the members of the public onsite will be the 16th of June. Dave Sasek, the GSA team have, have contingency plans in place should there be more members of the public than would fit in the boardroom. We have several other sites in this building, which have been used in the past when there, when there have been overflows where, so they'll, they'll be able to come onsite and speak here at the, at the podium, but they may have to sit for the duration of the hearing in, in other rooms. I think there'll be a capacity of over 100, and then we'll, in excess of that, we'll, we'll figure out the Zoom, Zoom technology on that for later. So, that's, I think, good news. And as Mr. Powers has said, it's kind of on the continuum of reopening. And I'm sure then...
I, I would personally like to make sure that the option to email and to have it read in as a statement needs to be continued. And also, our Zoom needs to be continued. There are people that are not feeling safe or comfortable for any which way, and we want to make sure that all our public has the opportunity to speak. And so, I want to make sure that that is going to continue, even if we do have a person come in, that those still need to be put in place to make sure that we hear from all.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
And Sean and Mike, we also have, at the board meetings with LAFCO and APCD, and we have RDP 21 down here in the, in the other building, and of course, also the Airport Authority. Are those also going to be open to the public? Can we, going to be able to sit at the dais? You know, the, the board members of LAFCO and APCD and, and for example, down, not at the dais, but we down in the, in the other building, we do have RDP 21 meetings and so forth. Are those permissible also?
I, I think like the regular board meetings, Supervisor, the physical distancing protocols will continue to take place. So, I am aware that some of those boards have a larger number of, of members. So, we'll have to make contingency plans so that they're not right next to each other. But I think the answer to your question is, of course, there'll be a public meeting, but the, the physical distancing will have to continue.
Well, with that, Supervisor Zaragoza, I think that is important, that if a board member wants to join in and Zoom, they should be allowed to be able to do that.
Understood.
So, I, I would agree with you because, like you just said, air quality, and there's a lot of board members that sit very closely together. I don't think we would want to suggest that. So, the option to Zoom in would be very nice, even if any of our supervisors felt that they needed to, they prefer to Zoom in, for whatever reason. I think that should be provided.
And also, and also, Madam Chair, as you know, we have the RBT, RDP 21 meetings down by the cafeteria, and we can also arrange that to, arrange it to for distancing procedures also. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Right, that's, that's a, you know, I, I am in support of doing this, definitely, and want to make sure that we just take the precautions, just as the school boards have asked for public health, what are the guidelines for the meetings? We'll get rotary, we'll ask, you know, it just, it's a starting point. We just need to make sure we think through it so that the safety of our community and that everyone...
Thank you for articulating that better than I did.
No, no, no. Yeah, my engineering brain just keeps checking. Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Also, you know, we have the, the Airport Authority meetings in the Camrio Chambers, and there is plenty of room there because there's, there's what, maybe six of us? I can't remember how many there is, six, seven of us? But we can also work with KIP on that, too. Okay.
Very true. Thank you. Any supervisors, any other questions, comments, statements in regards to this? Okay, so, this is great. People will not only be able to set an appointment, but they can come in for our, for our county services.
Absolutely.
Which is great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
And just lastly, I would say, you know, you could see some progress and efforts to support, lots, lots more work to do to be sure to support our community, our families and businesses. But at the same time, as the, as the data is showing us, you know, we have to continue to physically distance. We can't let our guard down, and we've got to watch those numbers, and the numbers are telling us something. So, when we reopen, we want to stay open. So, appreciate all that the community is doing to take us on that good path. And so, that's our report for today, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go into the other questions for our supervisors, we do have two mailed-in public comments. And so, I'd like to start first with Linda Lawrence.
Linda Lawrence, hello. Thank you to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors and staff for your continuing hard work related to the impacts of COVID-19 on the Ventura County community. I previously corresponded with you regarding wedding venues for your May 19th meeting. With the recent ADA reopening guidelines issued by the state yesterday, June 8th, 2020, I wanted to see if you can address and advise where wedding venues specifically fall into the reopening plans and specifically outdoor wedding venues. We had to postpone a family wedding set for May 2020 and reschedule for a date in July of 2020. A wedding is to be held at an outdoor wedding venue in Simi Valley. Thank you for any update you can give on this topic during your discussion today, and I would appreciate reply back with any information you can provide. Sincerely, Linda Lawrence, Thousand Oaks.
Thank you very much. And then, Victoria C.
And Victoria says, good morning. I'm flabbergasted by what I have just heard. With all due respect, the current pandemic has not been controlled and cases continue to rise. A lot of the complaints I heard are first-world problems. Nails can wait. Many salons have already reopened and have, and have some restaurants, so I don't understand the issue. I understand people are tired of being cooped up, and mental health is important, but folks can exercise outdoors for that. Scientists do not yet know enough about the disease, so it is prudent to be taking all of these precautionary measures. Please do not be hasty for insignificant complaints. The health of the community is more important. It is, it isn't wise to do a full reopening at this time. Mr. Levin is a doctor, and his advice is worth listening to. Sincerely, Victoria C.
Thank you very much. And with that, supervisors, would anyone like to comment, speak on any items? In hearing that, I just would like to say thank you to our community for holding on. It is 14 weeks. We have, many of us have been working either from home or in a location, making sure that we're safe and keeping others safe. Thank you to those who are shopping local and going to our restaurants in a safe manner locally. My, my family have enjoyed, it was a treat to actually go to a meal that I didn't have to cook. So, I appreciated that more than I ever thought I would. But keeping our businesses going, keeping our people employed, making sure that people go to their preventative doctor appointments is really keyshol for, crucial for our, our community. So, I just want to say thank you to our city, state, and federal partners for helping us to, for the betterment of our community. And thank you to our board members that are working so diligently. We have a budget for the state that we have been working on to make sure that the funding is coming to our community so that we can be a safety net. And I know each and every one of them is working very hard on that. So, I just want to say thank you very much and stay safe. And we will move on to 43.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
I'm going to add a little bit to what was shared is that I want to thank again the Ventura County residents to continue, to have Ventura County continue to be the leader in not only this COVID-19, but in other issues and items. But I just want to thank also the, our residents for, for following the guidelines and keeping Ventura County the safest possible. Compared to other counties, I think we're the leaders, and I want to thank our staff and Dr. Levin, Rigo, and, and the rest of the folks and our CEO for, for doing an excellent job for all of us. And that's given the opportunity to open up our, our government centers for the people to go out and, and continue with their businesses and also with the restaurants and, and just other events to, and other facilities are open for all of us to, to enjoy. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, item 43.
Chair Long, board members, CEO Powers, Scott Powers, County Executive Office, Budget and Finance Division. This item for you, about 12 days ago, we came to your board with a conceptual plan to provide $20 million of funding that will support businesses and rental assistance as well. Before yours is the, the agreement with BCCF for the Business Assistance Grant, as well as a briefing on the Housing Assistance Grant. I'd like to, at this time, have Vanessa Bictell, President and CEO of BCCF, Ventura County Community Foundation, to share a few words and brief your board on the process and moving forward with the Business Assistance Grant. So, Vanessa, if you're available?
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and Chair Long, and all of the Board of Supervisors and the executive team and all that have been working from the county on the Business Assistance Grants Program. I wanted to say my deep appreciation for the county of Ventura and the continued trust and support of our community and the Ventura County Community Foundation as well. We really recognize and are honored to participate. We also really appreciate the efforts of the Economic Development Collaborative and the Women's Economic Venture for their partnership in this as well. This has definitely been a collaborative effort. The Ventura County Community Foundation has been hard at work, and I just realized we can see each other, has been hard at work to help design a fair and rapid response for our business community. I will say that the leadership of Scott Powers and others have just really helped to drive this process forward and make sure that we are transparent and equitable. We have a special oversight committee that has been appointed that includes members from city government, the business community, the agricultural community, service organizations, and faith-based organizations so that we can help guide a fair and transparent process and give people an opportunity to voice their feedback or answer questions that they may have throughout the entire process. We know from experience, especially after the tragedy at Borderline, how critical it is that people have access and are able to get information quickly and transparently so that there's no confusion. So, we have a timeline, I know, that is set to go live pending your approval on June 17th. And from there, the application would be open for two weeks, ending on July 1st at 11:59 PM. The Economic Development Collaborative and Women's Economic Ventures are hoping to partner with them so that we can respond to the demand. And the demand is pretty unprecedented. I will say that we have, you know, already been fielding dozens and dozens of calls and emails from the business community as they are, you know, anticipating the support and and hopeful that they can get access to these funds. Certainly, the spectrum of businesses from 25,000 to 2 million in gross revenue for small businesses and nonprofits is certainly needed at this time. One of the things that we really strive to do also is develop outreach strategies to organizations that are more vulnerable and more high-risk. These include organizations like childcare, which are vital to getting our employees back to work throughout the county, restaurants and other retail firms and others, so that we can really inspire, you know, mass participation throughout the county. We expect unprecedented demand for this and unfortunately anticipate not having enough funds to meet all needs. So, we're working in partnership to develop a strategy that is fair and transparent, which would include an algorithm to help select eligible, you know, awarded recipients. And we want that to be weighted so that each city has representation and their fair share of support. With that, I will pause and answer questions that you might have.
Supervisors, do you have any questions for Vanessa Bictell?
I do.
Yes, Mrs. Parks, Supervisor Parks.
Yes, yes. As I mentioned previously on the item discussing this benefit that we're looking at providing to the business community, I want to put forward a criteria that we look at awarding those specifically in areas of disadvantaged communities and looking at CAL and ViroScreen, which has already mapped those areas, and using that as a criteria in addition to the ones that are already listed, including annual revenue years and operation and such. And I say this because our county's mission, first and foremost, you know, is to provide that safety net and the benefits that are received in those communities, if we can get people back and employed, getting health benefits and other benefits that are achieved just by helping to stimulate the economy. And as we look at the protests over the last week or so, that we're seeing a, a real call to assist those communities of color. And so, I, I would ask that we include that, and I'll ask my fellow board members if they think that is a criteria that should be incorporated as we're distributing 10 or 20 million dollars to help businesses.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I agree. I think it's really important that we assist, you know, the disadvantaged communities, you know, and follow the county mission statement as it was shared, because I think the important thing is to put most of the people back to work, and I think that would be an opportunity to do so. And I think, you mentioned initially, Vanessa, that the restaurant areas, the retail firms, and all those, all those businesses really need to get back on their feet again. And, and, and I agree with it. I think that we need to add that disadvantaged community section to, to the, our economic stabilization recovery program. Yes, yes, I do.
You know, one thing, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, Vanessa, please go ahead.
No, no, one of the things that I was going to suggest to that note is that we add a question on the first round of applications, you know, and we've talked through this as well, just to, to see if we can just identify the applicants that might be from women-owned or minority-owned businesses, majority-owned, and consider potentially helping do a subset or a special round, a second round. The other thing that I know that we also have recognized is how many employers in certain industries employ, you know, communities throughout, especially communities more at risk economically and also from minority communities and women, women, women in particular, part-time women as well. So, I just want to be sensitive to the fact that a lot of these businesses are really key to supporting our entire community and especially employing women and minority employees throughout our county.
And I guess the distinction would be that there are geographic areas that are significantly more economically distressed. And as a county, we want to bring up all our areas as opposed to, as I was mentioning previously, you know, someone who's working out of their garage, and he and his wife and their family, and they're not making a lot of money, but, you know, as opposed to an area, you know, in an blighted community where there is a significant need that, you know, helping that business getting up can actually help that whole community. So, I would like that to be a criteria.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Vanessa, El Conchilio there in Oxtard, they're on, you're aware, El Conchilio, they, they have a lot of connections with, with the women-owned businesses in Oxtard and small businesses. And there's quite a few restaurants in Oxtard that are women-owned, especially on A Street and over Second and Ventura, and I can name you all the way around town, and also small businesses, other than restaurants, that, that need assistance, you know, that I think help out tremendously.
And also, African-American women business owners, you know, they are some of the, you know, fewest that we have out there, too. So, that idea of being able to empower, I, I really like that idea also.
Thank you. Supervisor Huber.
This is, this is Steve Bennett.
I, I've got Supervisor Huber on the screen. Did you have a question, Supervisor Huber?
Yes, I wanted to make a statement.
Yes, I wanted to make a statement. I support Supervisor Park's idea to help better disadvantaged communities, and if that is a motion, I would second that motion.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate and welcome the concept that Supervisor Parks is putting forward. My question is, what's the way that we implement it? Are we identifying it as a criteria? And I just would like to ask Vanessa, given where we are in the timeframes, et cetera, how would you see implementing the concept that Supervisor Parks is rolling forward? I know you mentioned there were things we need, you thought we should be paying attention to, but would it be clear to you how to implement this criteria?
Well, I would love to get the feedback, too, of Bruce Stensley from the Economic Development Collaborative, too, but I think we could add questions on the application that are part of the county Board of Supervisors requirement, so we could ask questions and clarifying questions. It is really kind of balancing the fact that, you know, we have literally thousands and thousands and thousands of businesses throughout our county that could qualify, and just how we prioritize and how that gets weighted. But if we have instructions from the board, we can absolutely strategize on how to meet those requirements. And really, you know, we are here to be of help and support. Bruce, I just want to ask, do you have anything you'd like to add? Because I know we've been having the similar conversations and talking through this as well.
And while you're asking, Bruce, if I could just say one thing before Bruce's response, and that is, the specific thing that I heard from Supervisor Parks was to invest in disadvantaged communities, so to be minority ownership in disadvantaged communities would be the target that she is most referring to. So I just want to mention that as Bruce is preparing his answer.
Thank you very much for your comments. Bruce, good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, staff, Bruce Stensley, Economic Development Collaborative. I'm following along in the discussion, two or three quick points. One, just thanks to the county and concurring with prior comments about the important, the demand that is still out there in terms of the damage that's been done to business already and the slow slog moving ahead, so this is really an important investment. Couldn't agree more with the discussion on prioritizing and targeting. And there are two strategies here that we're hearing, and they work hand in hand. One is to identify by question in the application, I think would work, is to identify as a minority or women-owned business. We can provide a link to a definition of what that means based on SBA or other federal and state standards, so people aren't guessing, and there would be an adaptation to that. The other is, as long as we're capturing addresses to Supervisor Park's earlier point about EnviroScreen and others, and we already use in our data analysis with our clients a similar overlay of hub zones, opportunity zones, zones identified and defined by CDFI criteria from U.S. Treasury, but I think we'd want to use those in tandem, those two criteria. The trick here will be, and we're completely open to discussion, we absolutely are committed to the outreach to those businesses and neighborhoods, and that's what we understand our role in this. But then the question becomes, is in criteria, do we weight those applicants a certain way? What do we mean by prioritizing? Does all the money go there? Does a certain share go there? One of the discussions had been, and this isn't new, so we, the group with Mr. Powers' leadership and others, the two Mr. Powers' leadership and others, is we look at, as Vanessa had mentioned a moment ago, the first round of 5 million without using this criteria, the second round of 5 million using this criteria exclusively, or some combination. And there's a little time to figure that out, and we appreciate the direction, and if we can figure that out today, that would be fantastic.
And if I might, Supervisor Bennett kind of went a step farther than I did. I'm looking at the disadvantaged communities as identified in the CAL and EnviroScreen, and as you mentioned, it is simply based on NABIS, and actually, it's by census tract, as I understand. So it isn't necessarily needing to be a question on an application, but rather using the business's address to be able to weight that with some points. And that's what I'm looking at. It doesn't have to be the only criteria, but I'm just saying that that should be one of those criterias in way which applicants should receive the funding.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
And Vanessa, I think maybe a way to do it would be a good percentage of the funding close to the disadvantaged communities. And then maybe in the second phase, we can, but not all of them, of course, a good percentage, and then the second phase, and continue working with the rest of the folks. Because disadvantaged communities, I'm sure we'd be suffering a lot more, and as Supervisor Parks mentioned in the census section of it, you know, we find out that Oxtard really qualifies for that. And I'm just saying this Oxtard because it's my district, but this is where much of the help is needed. So a good percentage might be a way to start off, you know, to go in that direction, helping the lower-income disadvantaged communities and women-owned businesses.
Thank you very much. County Council has a question, if I can interrupt.
Yeah, excuse me, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question and a comment. I mean, first, the comment, just for the board to know on the record, we've not examined this proposal from a legal perspective. The way that the present, the package before the board is much different than this discussion. It is distributing the money via a weighted average by community, and also, there's a lottery system built in if there are more applicants than there are funds for the first round. So we, I'm not sure, so there, a lot of the agreements would have to be changed away from this weighted average approach. Plus, we'd have to confirm that the, these conditions would comply with the CARES Act funding. The other criteria is that the distribution comply with the federal CARES Act funding strings. We've not looked at it to see if a priority for disadvantaged communities would qualify or minority or women-owned businesses. So these are new factors that we've not evaluated at all, whether it's legal, whether it complies with the CARES Act funding, and how it could, how we would have to modify the agreements in the board letter to make it work. So that's all very difficult to do on the cuff here at this meeting.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Smith. So certainly understand that, and I'm just thinking out loud with your board and Scott here. So perhaps we could, you know, get some direction from your board today, but bring it back on next week, which will be the 16th, at which time the board could possibly give final approval with the adjustments they're recommending today. And that might line up well with the timing, because the application period starts June 17th, correct?
Correct.
So that might work, line up well, if that works for everyone?
Can I offer one item for discussion, Mike, with the board and with Leroy's, Council's comments, is this notion of disadvantaged communities and their priority. You know, 1,000 checks will be cut regardless of how we do this, and we're planning on going, if it triggers over 1,000, we go to lottery. What we could do is just simply, if applicant meets all the other qualifications and falls in the disadvantaged community map, as Supervisor Parks referenced, they are one of the thousands. They are part of that thousands group. So however many that is, could be 100, could be 600, the remaining would be the lottery. So the priority is given to those disadvantaged community, businesses that meet all the qualifications, and they're actually approved to be, have a check cut to them, assuming they meet all the requirements. And then the balance of the remaining applicants could be the lottery. I'm not sure, I know you still have more work to do, probably in council, but that's an opportunity.
Okay. And so it's important, Vanessa, you had a comment, yes, please.
You know, I'm wondering if we are able to just delay the application from going live one additional week, you know, Mr. Parks, I mean, Mr. Powers, Mike, if it just, we want to make sure that it's transparent and it's rolled out really well, you know, if throughout the county, we want to give equal opportunity for everyone to be able to apply. And that includes doing some public forums that we're going to start right away. So I just, I worry a little bit about kind of pushing up right against the day before going live, making sure that we can really accommodate any adjustments or tweaks, and making sure that people understand and have equal opportunity to apply. It just, I think it's a huge lift throughout the county, and I just really want to make sure we don't miss anybody. That's my only concern. It's just really important to give people an opportunity to learn the rules before they, before it starts.
Well, one other opportunity, if I could weigh in, is to continue with round one as we have planned, and then round two, we address disadvantaged communities, that is another option, if we're in the mode of expediencing itself.
This is Steve Bennett.
Yes, Supervisor Bennett, please.
So I'll try this again with the camera, but it doesn't seem to be working properly, but there we go. A possibility would be for us to give staff this direction, and I appreciate that Scott Powers has come up with two possible solutions for us. Give staff this conceptual direction, and I agree with Vanessa. If we're having another discussion next week on the 16th, and we're talking about the application going live on the 17th, that's, that just, that feels awfully tight. It seems like we ought to move that back. If we're going to move this back, we ought to move the rollout of the application back. To some people, if the criteria change on the 16th, that's not acceptable to the board in some way. Some people would say, well, maybe I wouldn't have applied, et cetera. But the, we have the option of letting staff see if they can capture the spirit of what the board has pulled together. And if they, if they have done that, we could apply that to the first wave of the funding. And if they, if we do that, we have this option with the second wave to then tweak it again. If we feel like we didn't get enough to the disadvantaged communities, we can tweak it again in the second half. So I know Scott suggested one would be just go with what we have and then tweak in the second half. I would like to try to see, see if we can come up with implementing the criteria and ready for us by the 16th, go live a week after that, so that we can try the minority side in the first wave, and then see if we have to tweak again for the second wave.
Supervisors.
Madam Chair, and I think one thing that Supervisor Bennett mentioned, too, is that potentially, if we go that route, we might pick up quite a few of the underserved community in the first round, you know, as was mentioned before. So, and then we go to the second round, and, you know, and hopefully pick up additional. But, but that might be a good move, because potentially, we might pick up quite a few, as you mentioned, Vanessa, in the first round. So I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I do agree with Supervisor Bennett's suggestion, especially when we look at the timeline, and issue funding to grantees by August 5th. That's a long time. And if we're delaying, if we get the spirit of what we're going through and the direction, and if we can tweak it for the second round, do it, I think that would be more beneficial to our businesses, because I think you're going to have to let us know, but I think the majority of them will be those that need the money right away, whether they're, I think they're going to be in the, where we're trying to target anyways. So I would, I would agree with that.
I just want clarity, as I understood the suggestion by Supervisor Bennett, it was to come back next week with how we can include disadvantaged communities as a criteria, and then with the second round, see if we can tweak that some more. Is that correct?
Supervisor Bennett?
Generally, that is, yeah, generally, that is what I was saying, is that, you know, oftentimes, staff has been able to do a great job and find some way to do this. So yes, take the comment about trying to make this a criteria and see what they can come up with for the 16th, and then, not that we will adjust, but that if we need to adjust for the second phase, we can then adjust for the second phase also. But that lets us get, I'm afraid if we wait until the second phase, we will not have learned anything from the first phase. So let's try to have staff come up with the best that they can where we implement this criteria, and that gives county council the opportunity to do some research and say we should, if we're going to do this criteria, we have to do it this way or that way or whatever. But let's see how much county council and staff can come up with a way to implement the criteria, and then see if we're comfortable with it, both next week and after the first wave goes out there. It does, it does make me feel good about the fact that we broke this into two waves so that we could evaluate where we are after we're halfway through the money. So my compliments to everybody that participated and came up with that implementation strategy for us. Thank you.
And thank you to Supervisor Bennett for the suggestion, and I agree with that, and I would definitely make that a motion if we're ready for that.
Yes, I think we are ready for the motion. If it's clear with Scott, please clarify.
If I may, in terms of timing, the Rental Assistance Grant is moving forward June 17th, nothing to do there. The Business Assistance is moving to June 24th, with a report back on the 16th, one week.
Yes.
Second, the motion.
It's been first by Supervisor Parks and second by Supervisor Zaragoza. Any further questions, Mr. Powers?
I'm going to actually.
Steve Bennett.
I have to, I don't understand the motion. I mean, I guess I'm.
Thank you.
Confused. So I'm not, I'm not sure what the motion is.
The motion is, just as written, with the addition of adding the opportunity for a criteria for disadvantaged communities and come back next week with that.
Does that mean that you're not approving the criteria, we're just stating that we're going to consider this and come back next week to finalize and publish the criteria?
Yes.
Okay.
Vanessa, Supervisor Bennett, go ahead. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I just, oh, sorry, Supervisor Bennett, go ahead, please.
Well, I just think we are approving directing, we're directing staff to try to implement that criteria that has been articulated. So yes, I think we're approving, or we're giving staff direction to implement that into a new packet that comes back to us on the 16th, that helps answer Leroy's question.
And Supervisor Bennett, or is, does that mean that the business application period gets launched then on the 24th and not on the 17th, and we just leave it open still for two, we would leave it open still for two weeks?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you.
That would be the motion.
This is Bob Huber. Can you hear me?
Yes, Supervisor Huber.
Once we vote on this motion, I have an additional motion to make on this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one, and that is, do, can we assume that from a business standpoint, we need to do this, but that from a rental assistance standpoint, we don't need to have this be a criteria? I think it's more, because we're focused on low income already, I think we're probably okay. I just wanted to raise that issue out there, so, the more I think about it, I think that's where we stay at this point in time. All right.
Vanessa. I've just, one more, one more point of clarification, I just, my team is also listening, and they just reminded, the whole process will get pushed back just by one week throughout that whole process, because each stage is a pretty labor-intensive process. So we want to make sure, not only that we are doing this fair and equitably and transparently, but we also, it just, logistically, will take some time. So we'll just push off checks being ready one week through that process as everything gets implemented throughout that timeline.
Thank you.
And so just to be.
Powers.
Yeah, so that Business Assistance.
Yeah, so, so that business assistance deadline for application will start, that 14 day window will start on the 24th. Just to be clear. And then on the rental assistance program, that program your board is recommending approving as written and as recommended. No change in each of the criteria.
Okay, and that was a motion by Supervisor Parks as amended. And second by Supervisor Zaragoza, is that correct?
As amended.
Well, sorry, we have.
I still want to clarify, I, I. I'd like to restate what I think the motion is on the business assistance.
Thank you.
So, and I, and I'm going to have to break it down a little bit, but the motion is to add some criteria. And I want to clarify what those criteria are. But it's through a process matter, you would approve that new articulation of eligibility. And staff, the county staff will come back next week and tell you whether that's lawful or not. If, maybe we'll say, if we conclude it's fine, then we just go forward. If we conclude you can't do it, then we'll have to reconsider. So it's sort of approving your vision today, subject to staff coming back and saying that's a, a problem and we're going to have to revise that. Conceptually, that's what's happening right now. But as to the criteria, what I'm hearing is prioritize disadvantaged communities. And it's unclear what prioritize means. And I want to, there was a reference to a map with, and I don't have that. Is that environment, EnviroStream map?
It's called CalEnviroScreen. And I think, you know, it is, it is out there. It is a map. It is through Census Trac and we do use it in other things in our county. And I, I think Scott Powers also explained well, I think, how they can use that criteria and see, look at the applicants. It's based on Census Trac.
So the map you described and people who live in that or businesses in that, those communities would get a priority. Is there, is the board adopting some priority for minority or women owned businesses? Is that another part of this? That's, that's not clear to me either. So I'd like to clarify.
That is not what I requested. Mine was just looking at the disadvantaged communities and adding that to the criteria. And I, I think you'll find that that is already a part of the, when they do CalEnviroScreen, they are looking at communities of very low income areas that are lighted. So that's already taken into account quite often.
So you would not add any additional language about minority or women owned businesses?
No.
So I, I just, we need a clean, clear motion. That's, and that's why I'm obsessing over this. Because there's a lot of money being distributed.
Correct.
And we want to be clear and correct in how we do it.
I don't know. I, I understand the motion is giving priority to businesses in the disadvantaged communities on this map that was referred, which I won't try to repeat. And that, that's the direction to the staff and that's, and, and we'll have to reconcile this with the language in the drafts about weighted, you know, that the money will be distributed based on weighted per district, per community. We'll have to reconcile that. The staff will go forward with that and will we come back, put this on next week and if we see a problem, we'll raise it next week. If not, it will just go forward under the, under that.
And Leroy, that's going to be subject to your advice next week.
Well, we'll have to look, research it and, and yeah, and tell you if we see a, any kind of legal problem. If not, you, you know, we'll tell you there's no legal problem and, but we'll check back in more or less. So that's how I understand the motion.
Chair Long?
Yes, Supervisor Bennett?
I'm Bruce Densley.
Oh, sorry, Bruce. I thought, I thought we were having Supervisor Bennett up as well. So Bruce, please go ahead.
I just, just to add a question on this. I would encourage that we consider both the map and the distribution of businesses by disadvantaged community and by minority and women owned businesses generally who may not reside in disadvantaged communities. My hope would be that the direction from the motion is for staff to go back and craft that language that would come back in a recommendation next week and to consider both criteria. That's just from our angle as, as the EDC.
And that sounds good to me, you know, to include both. Does the rest of the board agree that we can include both?
Madam Chair, Bruce, are you saying that the business has to be in the disadvantaged community, not the owner? Is that it?
No, I'm saying that I think we should consider two criteria. One, businesses that are located in disadvantaged communities and businesses owned by minorities or women that may not be located in disadvantaged neighborhoods.
And, and that'll help with creating jobs and, and maintaining the businesses and so forth. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Just.
Minister Powers?
Just for background too, my understanding is other counties have set aside a percentage for women and minority owned businesses. So it's consistent with other approaches.
Good.
That sounds.
I, I'll revise the motion and if the second is accepting.
Yes, and with Leroy's, you know, subject to conditions.
That is lawful.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, it has been, the motion has been restated for clarification by Supervisor Parks and then seconded by Supervisor Zaragoza. Are there any further questions? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. There's a lot of hard work on this. I know Mr. Powers wants to say something. So please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Long, board members. A, a lot of moving parts as we witness here today and appreciate the good discussion with your board. But I really do want to recognize some folks who've worked on this to get it to the here this, this quickly and start with county council. There's a lot of work around the clock, Leroy in his office, a lot of moving parts here and complexities. So appreciate him keeping us and his team compliant. Scott Powers, Robert Bravo, again constantly working on these issues, Vanessa, Bruce, EDC, the Workforce Development Board, Paul Stamper, Melissa and Women's Economic Venture. And even at that, I'm sure I'm leaving somebody off, but it's a, it's a tight group and your board for giving us guidance and direction along the way to, to get to this point. So just thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bob Huber, I want to add.
Huber had a second motion. Thank you. Your comments?
Yes, the Economic Stability Recovery Program is a great program in use of the CARE funds, CARE Act funds. The business community has been hit hard by the necessary response to COVID-19 and because small mom and pop stores are the backbone of a thriving community, they deserve our help as they struggle to get through these tough and unprecedented times. When to make a couple of comments on this item and then suggest one change for us on the board to consider. The Ventura County Community Foundation is an excellent organization to publicize and administer this program. They do very good work to improve our community as we fight COVID-19. They do good work on behalf of our local businesses. They are an honorable group that hardly needs oversight. However, this Economic Stability and Recovery Program calls for an oversight committee and, and after seeing the names of the oversight committee, I did not see names from the city of Simi Valley. I'm asking the community foundations, they can look, look to provide regional balance on the oversight committee and add some Simi Valley names. This program also excludes businesses that have qualified for the PPP. However, many of these businesses like those with less than 60% of their expenditures in payroll will still need to pay back the PPP. I'm hoping in future rounds that we find a way to add businesses to this program that qualify for the PPP but will need to be, pay back the PPP loan in full. Another issue with eligibility that I have is that businesses established after September 1st, 2019 are excluded from any help. I'm asking my colleagues on the board to look to change the eligibility cri- criteria to include businesses established after September 1st, 2019 and before March 17th, 2020. These businesses had no clue that their businesses will be shut down. For those that are still open and struggling to survive, they deserve our help also. And as such, I want to make this motion. Move to change the eligibility of businesses to those that have been in operation in Ventura County since prior to March 17th, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you for that motion Supervisor Huber. I, I have a question in regards to county council, if that date can be moved? If we're using the CARES Act funding, I, I need clarification on that.
I, I have to admit, I didn't follow all that. The, the thing we just passed, I think has, that you had to be in operation before September 2019? Is, is this what the issue relates to? Supervisor Huber wants to limit it to businesses that started before 2017?
No. What he's asking, what I, I had a conversation prior to this, is we had a six month window where business had to be standing and working and, and operating to them, for them to qualify, which was the September 1st, 2019 six month window. What he's suggesting is that's, there's no need for that. If businesses are affected, even if they opened before March 17th, they are still affected by this. There's no need for a window. So a qualifying business wouldn't have to be in operation going, starting September 1st, 2019. They could be in operation as of March 17th, 2020. And therefore, they still qualify.
Okay, I, I, I follow the issue. We, but the package we just voted on had the September.
Correct, had a six month requirement.
He wants to, he does, it would have no date or have March 17th, 2020.
Yes.
If the business was in operation by that.
Thank you, Scott, for your clarification.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, so.
Steve Bennett?
I understand it.
This is Steve Bennett.
Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
I'd like to comment on that. Quite frankly, I, I don't know what I think about it. I think, you know, Supervisor Huber makes some good points. But it's just not something I've thought about and so I'm reluctant to change what staff has come up with at this point in time. But because we are postponing the actual implementation, could we direct staff to analyze this proposal of Supervisor Huber's when they come back to us so that we all have? Bob, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that there isn't some unintended consequence that I haven't had a chance to think through because I'm just hearing about it now, but.
Steve, that's a fair comment. Thank you. That's a fair comment. Thank you.
Yes. That's what I'd like to do is ask, just, it's just, I, I, what I'd like to do is, is, is ask, ask, make this direction to staff to analyze this, this suggestion from Supervisor Huber so we all know what the impacts would be, advantages and disadvantages. Does this open up some kind of loophole that we're not aware of or, or thinking about that kind of thing? Thank you.
So then we would not need a motion. So if we could have Supervisor Huber withdraw the motion and then we would request the staff to look at this information and report back at the next meeting, which is on June 16th.
I agree with that and I will withdraw the motion.
Thank you for the clarification and appreciate that you're bringing this up. It is definitely a team effort here in making sure we're providing the assistance to our community. So thank you. Thank you very much.
And I just asked county, I just asked county council, we don't need to make a motion for staff to be directed to analyze this, correct?
That's correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for confirming. The, do you want to bring up the one item, Mr. Powers, in regards to the COVID on the 61 or wait? I know we have other time certains. If not, we can just. So many things that we have to do right now. Because I, I could say we could go into our board comments or we can move into. Okay, pleasure my board. Great, I get to rule the meeting. Great. I will open it up next to the board comments. So Supervisor Zaragoza, do you have any board comments for us today?
Yes, yes, thank you so much. You know, I, I'd like to adjourn with a, with a memory of the people on the list that I want to provide to the clerk. But I also want to share that the Nylund Promise over Nylund Acres this last weekend provided hundreds and hundreds of boxes of, of food and, and vegetables and veggies to, to the residents there. And they were provided by, or worked with by Clinicas Del Monte in the port of Waynimi. And they, I mean, they absolutely get hundreds and hundreds of people picking up food and, and also this last Monday in Nylund Acres again, they provided additional 300 homes to, to the people there and 520 lunches, you know, for, for the kids there. And, and they're providing a food pantry for individuals that need food on a daily basis. I just like to commend them. And also again, as we mentioned earlier, that NAACP chapter, Ventura County chapter by Regina Hatcher was just absolutely great. And thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much Supervisor Zaragoza. Supervisor Bennett?
There we go. Thank you. I think I'm on here, right? While it's coming, while the video's coming up, I hope it's going to come up here. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn and remember the people on the list that we're submitting to the clerk. And I'm not getting my video to come.
We can see you.
Can you guys see me?
Yes.
There we go.
Yes.
Now the video's come up. And my only comment is, is one that's relates to the, to the overall topic that we've really been focused on a lot here in the last 10 days or so. But it's, there's been an historic increase in our consciousness and recognition of systemic racism that permeates our county, our country's culture, you know, economically, socially and structurally. And we just all need to play a part in trying to turn this historic moment into real, meaningful change out there. So my focus right now is on what do I need to do as a county supervisor and as a person to play my proper role in bringing about a real and meaningful change in our, our country. And I haven't personally experienced the impacts of systemic racism in, in the same way that my fellow black and brown community members have. And that's why I'm endeavoring right now to listen as carefully as I can as I consider what I should do both as a county supervisor and as a person. And that's where I am right now with this part of the process. Thank you very much. It's, it is a historic moment and I hope we all do well in, in creating the change that is needed in our country. Thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Huber?
I wanted to recognize all of our hardworking county employees. Whether you are caring for sick in the hospitals or trying to help some of our mom and pop businesses survive. Thank you for your hard work. This past Saturday was the 76th anniversary of D-Day. May those that lost their lives rest in peace and may we find peace as well. Lastly, I'd like to adjourn and remember the people on the list that have an email to the clerk of the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Huber. Supervisor Parks?
Yes, I also want to echo the words of Supervisor Bennett. The, the fact is that we are a government entity. We do have a lot of ability to make change and I really respect the peaceful protesters, the actions that are needed and look forward to our county taking some very positive actions in that regard. I want to also congratulate Lori Verlata. She's Cal Lutheran University's first female president, taking over for Chris Kimball and look forward to working with her. And then some good news that we had three new mountain lion kittens and they have new diversity in the gene pool. So, so that's kind of exciting. We like to see new life during these difficult times. And then I've also submitted a list to close in honor of some individuals in our, in my district who have passed away, including some, some Army veterans. So thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you very much Supervisor Parks. For my comments, we as a county are looking at our state is to the funding and also our federal.
As the Chair for the Urban Counties of California, we're, I, along with colleagues, are urging our state to make sure that we're advocating for the realignment backfill and hope to get an active budget negotiations going on the next week or so. So we're looking after that to make sure that we get the safety net of services for our community when we need it most filled. We also have, I've been attending the Cal OES and State Conference calls for our monitoring, also for our testing and really appreciate Dr. Gally and Anna Manasantos and all those that have reached out to the California State Association of Counties to make sure us as board members understand the changes that are coming and collaborating on the things that we need to do to protect our community while still being able to promote our economy and get things moving forward in a safe pace. And so really do appreciate that. The other things that I wanted to just state is congratulations to all the graduates. This is amazing time and we need to really just remember that, that we need to celebrate the simple things. And just simply graduating is a huge step. Actually, it's not simple. It's a lot of hard work. And so for the promoter, those that are promoting to the next stage of their schooling or those that are graduating, congratulations. I know your parents, your family members, your community members are very proud of you. Hopefully you'll be working in our community quickly to, to utilize that education that we are at. I know that Stan Mantooth, our Ventura County Office of Engineering, Office of Education, has received our Superintendent's of Schools information as to what we need to do to start schools in the fall. I know things will be moving or changing depending on how we do this. So I, I ask all the parents out there for some empathy and, and to work collaboratively with it because we're already getting feedback on that. So thank you for, for understanding as we are all moving forward on this. And then last, I have those to adjourn on the memory of the list that has been submitted. Thank you very much. Oh, and there's also comments about our board meetings. Nothing has been changed except for the June 22nd meeting has been canceled. So I want to make sure people know that as employees, since we do have hotels coming open on June 12th, maybe you'll vacation at a hotel close by and still enjoy a couple of days off. So thank you so much to everyone for your timely efforts and so forth. It's been a lot of work for this last 14 days and we respect and just say thank you to the community and our employees for the tremendous work that you're doing to keep our community safe in regards to COVID-19. So thank you. And yeah, Mr. Powers. I, I was just going to say, I reflect back on our moment of inspiration with the NAACP. And it's just amazing the faith and community leaders that are helping to make the conversations happen. They may be difficult, but they need to happen. And it's important for us to change and understand and move forward. So I appreciate everyone's protesting in a peaceful way and making sure that people don't get in harm's way. So thank you to our sheriffs for also being there for our community and making sure that our protesting can be done in a peaceful manner. So thank you.
Thank you Chair Long. And in that regard, as you know, many county employees Friday at 12:30 did participate in a moment of silence in honor of Mr. George Floyd for the eight minutes and 46 seconds. Along with at the healthcare agency and VCMC Medical Leadership held a very powerful event as well at 12:30 and some very inspiring and personal speeches by Dr. John Finkhauser, Dr. Fred Kelly, Dr. Tom Duncan and Dr. Terry Cho. So encourage you, if you get a chance to look at those, those are on our social media. So also wanted to just give your board an update on the census. So right now our response rate's about 69.9% and we're fourth in the state. Just want to let you know there's a census car caravan planned for Saturday, June 20th. The caravan will work its way through Oxnard, Fillmore and Santa Paula. Like the officials are welcome to participate and time and locations to come. And then lastly, to let you know that we've done, as you, as your board knows, some financing lately. So we did go out to do our annual financing, but also to refinance the hospital bonds essentially. And in order to do that, because that's long-term debt, we had to go get our, our long-term ratings evaluated at Standard and Poor's and Moody's. And as you know, we were successfully able to do that with your board's support to maintain our AAA rating with both Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And that's on the long-term and the short-term. And appreciate that there's a lot that went into that. Both Kay Mand and Brian Friedman and her team, Jeff Berg and his team and Roy Allen and everybody from the Auditor Controller's Office. And then I want to recognize Chair Long as well because these meetings with the, with the rating agencies were, they're always intense, but these were especially intense. This is my 10th year of doing these meetings and each one was three hours long and examining every aspect of our county operations in very detail, very great detail. And appreciate her leading and participating in those, in those sessions. And as you see, we got a very good result from, from the rating agencies. And that enabled the, our office to go out and refinance the hospital bonds. And that, the good news on that is that will result in $2 million of annual savings on the debt as well as about $34 million of net present value debt, all considered for the whole package. So that's a benefit to the, to the taxpayers. And then just this morning, we went out with our short-term. We borrow annually to prepay, as your board knows and directs us, to prepay our pension costs. And that saves us anywhere from five to six million dollars in general fund dollars for our community that goes to services. And we just went into the market today and they sold for, I think it was 0.19%. So very, very, very low. Great, great deal. And again, we had a good meeting with the investor groups on that. So a positive result. And again, thank Kay and the Auditor's Office and, and the whole team for putting all that together. And that's my report. Thank you.
That's a huge feat. Congratulations to the whole team. That's just wonderful.
Thank you.
It was interesting conversations of having to deal with three years of disasters and COVID-19 questions. And we basically just bragged about how it was great, how wonderful our community has been able to keep going and be successful. And it really is a huge team effect to be able to do that. So.
Well, you bragged with facts.
Yes, with truth.
Yes, yes. But also I want to just mention to you, as you, as you touched upon Chair, is the uncertainty, you know, with COVID. So many questions about, you know, we can go through our whole thing, we did. But they're just, they're just trying to understand what this means to local government, cities, counties, to this particular local government, this particular economy and community. And, you know, it speaks to, I don't know, just this, this very compassionate, caring community we have here too.
Right.
And putting, I mean, we talked about where we are in our reopening phase, our public health numbers and so forth. So just, just everything, yeah.
And also commitment to the board. The board that we have now and the board that has, we've had in the past. Or making sure we have those reserves for times like we have it now where we need it.
That's exactly right. And, and you know, it's, it's, it's easy to talk about that, but it's hard to, for your, you know, I'm sure as we know for elected officials, that, that takes a lot of discipline. And the rating agencies recognize that that takes a lot of discipline to increase those reserves to that degree, both the unassigned rating day and the assigned reserves over the years. And this is, you know, this is the result. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Okay, and moving on to the 10 o'clock. We're only a little bit short, but that's okay. Item number 47, we have a public hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution approving engineering reports for Oakview School.
Good morning Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Greg Bergman from the General Services Agency and I am here to present item number 47 on the Oakview Preservation and Maintenance District. This is the 19th year of the assessment and many projects have been completed that are benefiting the local community. The recommended actions for you today are that you conduct a public hearing concerning the adoption of the resolution and adopt the resolution approving the engineers' report. By adopting the resolution, you will be ordering the levy of the assessment for fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
Do we have any public comments for this public hearing?
No public comments.
Okay, with no public comments, I can close this public hearing. Do I have any comments from our board members? And with none, I need a motion to approve.
Huber, so move.
Okay, it's been first by Supervisor Huber and I believe second by Supervisor Zaragoza. Is that true?
Supervisor Bennett, I think.
Oh, sorry Supervisor Bennett. Thank you. First by Supervisor Huber, second by Supervisor Bennett. Roll call please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes. Motion approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is our public hearing, item number 24 or 48 for the resolution ordering levy of school special taxes for our Nylund Acres Community Center.
Again, my name is Greg Bergman for the record. I'm here to present item 48 for the Ventura County Community Facilities District, number 2015-01, otherwise known as the Nylund Acres Community Center. And again, we're have, the recommended action is that your board conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the engineers' report.
So I will open up a public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, with no public comments, I will close the public hearing. Any further discussions from our supervisors?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Supervisor Zaragoza. Second please. Can I get the second motion on this?
Huber, second.
Thank you. It's been second by Supervisor Huber. Without any more discussion, roll call please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes. Motion is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 49 regarding the public hearing regarding approval and adoption of fiscal year 2021 benefit assessment for our watershed protection district.
Morning Chair Long, members of the board, CEO Powers, Glenn Shepard, Ventura County Public Works, Watershed Protection for the record. I'm here today requesting that you receive public testimony and approve the benefit assessment program for the next fiscal year. The district brings the benefit assessment program before your board annually to confirm and adopt assessments after hearing from the public. If approved, the program will yield $12.1 million for the district and its partnering cities to execute the district's routine operations and maintenance, flood damage repair reserve and the Ventura Countywide Stormwater Quality Management Program, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Activities. As your board is aware, Proposition 218 restricts raising benefit assessment rates without comprehensive public consultation and a vote. Accordingly, the benefit assessment rates and calculation methodology, methodology remain the same as previous years. Exhibits 1 through 3 of the proposed resolution detail the benefit assessment rates and revenue generated. I won't go into any other details as the related materials were presented to your board and available to the public on May 19th, 2020. Subject to your questions, that concludes my presentation.
So I'll open this public hearing. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
And no public comments, I will close this public hearing. Any further discussion from our supervisors? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Believe the recommended action.
It's been first by Supervisor Bennett. Can I get a second please?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Zaragoza. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber. Supervisor Huber. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes. So motion is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is item 50, but I understand the changes are the same from item 50 to 58. Please come on down. I just had a question in regards to our legal counsel, Mr. Smith. If we, if you want us to vote separately for each one of them or because the change is for the same that we vote for all of them at one time? Want to just confirm before we move forward.
I believe you can vote for all of them at one time.
So then I can open the public hearing for all of them.
And have one, one public hearing to cover all of them.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Good morning Chair Long, board members, CEO Powers, to be in Co-CEO for the County Executive Office, Division Labor Relations. I will be, I will be presenting agenda items 50 through 58, nine items in all. And Chair Long, as you noted, there is one common amendment among the nine items. However, items 54 to 57 have a second amendment that is common to those four items. So what I can do is I can explain amendment number one, explain amendment number two and then at your direction, and the board's pleasure, I can answer any questions.
Yes, please.
Thank you. The first amendment is an amendment to revise the existing amendments of agreements to allow employees to accrue up to 60 hours of paid time off, whether it be vacation or annual leave time in excess of the maximum accrual limit set forth in the respective labor agreements with the county. During the COVID crisis, as you know, the county workforce has stepped up to provide first responder frontline and other healthcare and support services to our community. During this time, our workforce has worked long hours and in many cases, because of the specialized skillset and the demand for services, have been unable to utilize the vacation time or annual leave time that they accrue as part of their benefits package. In other cases, vacation plans have been canceled altogether because of the level of restrictions or considerations given COVID-19. As a result of this, employees have reached the maximum accrual limit and have therefore stopped accruing vacation time through no fault of their own. So for the, so this first amendment will allow employees to accrue 60 hours beyond the accrual limits of their respective labor agreements. For this provision to become effective, a natural disaster as defined under Section 1804 of the county personal rules and regs will first need to be declared by your board of supervisors, which it did in March for the COVID-19 crisis. Employees who accrue hours in excess of the established maximum accruals will then have six months after the, the end of the natural disaster to use those hours or lose them. In other words, once a natural disaster has been declared over, they will have six months to draw down their banks to the previous levels, maximum levels, or they will lose the value of those hours. The second amendment, which is common to items 54 through 57, is to provide the day after Thanksgiving as the paid assignment holiday. So this would revise the respective articles for those four contracts to add the day after Thanksgiving. This is something that your board approved for, for contracts earlier this year and the management resolution. The, the spirit and intent when we did that was to apply this countywide. So your board adopting these amendments today would satisfy that intent. The, the last item, number 58, is not actually a contract amendment. It's a recommendation to adopt a manager, an amended management resolution. The amended management resolution would provide for the 60-hour accrual limit extension, but not for the day after Thanksgiving holiday amendment since that was already done by your board back in December. That concludes my explanation. The, the other man, recommendations are to waive the second hearings or required in the personal rules and regs and at the conclusion of this hearing today to adopt the recommended amendments. Thank you very much and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. I will now open up the public comments for items 50 through 58 on all items. Do we have any public comments on any of those items?
No public comments.
Okay, with no public comments on items 50 through 58, I will close the public comments. Period. And supervisors, I open this up for you. If there's any questions, concerns, statements. It's a lot of great work and negotiation going on to make sure that we can do this and appreciate all of those unions, associations, working with us to get this going. Can I get a motion to approve? Supervisor Parks, did you have a comment?
No move the motion.
Thank you. It's been first by. Sup, it's been first by Supervisor Parks and second by Supervisor Huber. Roll call please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes, yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes, and those items have been approved. Do we need to read anything into the moment, minutes? Okay, wonderful.
Thank you to the board. Thank you Mike Powers.
Thank you. Item fifty-nine. Prioritized Bike Lane Projects.
Good morning Chair Long, supervisors, Mr. Powers, for the record, I'm Dave Fleisch with the Public Works Agency. For once, I'm going to be talking to you some, about something that's not about COVID right now, so it's a little different topic. I've been back before your, or been before your board several times to talk about bike lanes, and this is a continuation of some of that discussion.
But it is, we need it for the budget moving forward, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so there's reasons why, thank you.
So in twenty seventeen, the Public Works Agency Transportation Department was present before your board three times actually with bike lane study sessions to identify and prioritize construction of bike lanes in the county road right of way. Through those deliberations, your board provided us a fairly comprehensive set of criteria, which is provided as exhibit one to the board letter, that allows to look at any given project and rank it against other projects. This is a reminder, we looked at, at five basic criteria, safety and comfort, route readiness, sustainability and economic benefit, partnership and funding leverage, and for each one of those, we weighed, we weighed those to try to come up with a criteria that fairly looked at each one of those criteria as we move forward with each one of the projects. During those study sessions, we talked quite a bit about the complexity of construction of the projects, and your board requested that, or expressed a desire that we could complete projects more quickly than we had been previously specifically to category B bike lane projects, and I'm going to address those A, B, and C's here coming up shortly. Got myself too quick here.
That clicker has a mind of its own sometimes.
Oh, sorry. I'm an engineer, I can only point in one direction. So just to recap where we are with approved action items last June, so just about a year ago, your board approved a funding plan of seven point eight million dollars over a four-year, five-year period, I'm sorry, for funding of bike lanes, a one point eight million in this current fiscal year, and for those two top priority projects, and I will show you that we're actually underway on those two projects right now, and then an allocation of six million dollars, my goodness. An obligation of six million, or an expectation of six million dollars of, of separate funding through the assigned program mitigation in order to consider funding for several additional projects. At that time, your board asked us to come back with, we, we did not have costs at the time for some of the projects for the category Cs, the more difficult construction, so your board asked us to come back with those with costs, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about today. Just briefly, and this is a busy slide, and I, but it, it helps set kind of the stage for you, this shows a number of different things, the lines in the legend will describe to you again, the green are the existing bike lanes in the incorporated county, I believe that's purple, and I apologize, I'm somewhat colorblind, so the, the next line is the bike lanes that we've completed, the ones underway, and then the remaining, and then the regional wayfinding routes. This, this gives you an overall visual picture. So where are we in the last about year and a half? We've completed a number of projects, thirty-eight miles of what are called category A bike lanes, those were essentially ones where there was already shoulder there, it just needed striping and signage and the, and the symbols, that has all been done, and that's all of the category A bike lanes that we are aware that we have at this time. Category B projects, we've completed three, phase one of, of Petrero Road, the east portion, Sespe Street, and then also Casitas Vista, and these pictures were actually taken about three weeks ago, so that project was just recently completed. In addition, again, this, you could see those projects are listed there, but in addition, we have two other, or three other projects that are on here, the second phase of Petrero is currently under construction, Rose Avenue, short structure is out to bid, and Rice is just about to begin construction. So we've got, gotten quite a bit of work done actually in about the past eighteen months. Just a reminder of what the categories are, category B essentially is existing roadway with a, primarily a dirt shoulder wide enough to accommodate the bike lane, it just means that we have to go back and put in the asphalt, the signage, the striping, there may be some minor drainage or other work, but it's primarily just putting the pavement down. Category C requires more work, it may not have enough shoulder, we may have to widen the shoulder, and there may be drainage issues, utilities, trees, obstructions, things that we would have to do additional work on, and then C two is even more complex in terms of, in terms of the construction, we either have ag land issues, we've got quite a bit more drainage, or some other things that we would need to do. So again, to recap, when we came to, to you last time, here's the remaining category B bike lanes, you'll see to the far left column is the priority number off the priority ranking from the criteria your board provided, and, and we added a couple of columns on here to help understand that the projects, when you look at the cost of a project, sometimes it's, it's hard to see how to, how to normalize so that for this and the next couple of charts, we have the cost per bike lane mile, so you can see what they look like per mile of project, how, what their connectivity is to an existing other bike lane, and months to shovel ready, essentially what's it going to take us to begin construction. Typically, what, if there's no, if there's no concerns or problems with the project, it takes us around twelve months to do the design, get it out to bid, go through that process, for ones that are beyond that twelve months is because there's either right of way issues, utility issues, some, some other things that would take us further. So as you can see from this, there's a total of twenty-one bike lane miles, that's about ten and a half miles of road, bike lanes on both sides, at a cost of about seven million dollars. So reminder, your board set aside an allocation potentially six million dollars, there's another million to that that's added from the road fund, essentially do the design before we get to the, to the construction. In addition to those, we have the category Cs, which we did not have costs on previously, we hired a consultant to help us with that, your board approved that in November, and as a result of that study, we've come up with the cost for the category, the top ten essentially category C bike lanes, you'll see here, that's about the same mileage nineteen million, or nineteen miles of bike lane, but instead of seven millions of dollars of construction, it's twenty-seven million dollars of construction, which shows the complexity of the construction. Same thing you see here, cost per mile, connectivity, months to shovel ready, and each one of those, there's a particular reason why the cost is more of what it is. You'll note on the, on the previous one, if you take out Santa Rosa Road, it has mostly pavement, there is some work we do need to do, which is why it's category B, but if you take that out, the cost per mile is about four hundred and thirty thousand a mile for the category B. For the category Cs, if you look at it, the, the cost is about one point, one point four million per mile, so about three times the cost. So when you put all of that together, both the B and the C, as you see here, to get those top twenty, eight, twenty projects, now there were twenty, but we've already done two, so that's why you only see eighteen here, you see a total of about thirty-four million dollars and forty-two miles of bike lane. So with that in mind, and that your board has provided an allocation potentially six million with additional million dollars from the road fund, we've got two potential suggested options for you, and a third would be for you to choose something else if that's what you desire. The first is, what was original, what was the original push, or the original recommendation by your board for the six million dollars, which was to defund the remaining category B projects? And that's what this shows here in green, those, in the integrated priority list, and that would cover that seven million dollars, the six million of that allocation plus the million from the, from the road fund. Or option B, which would be to fund the first category C project and all of the B projects except for one, and that's project number fourteen there. And you can see the main difference in that is that first category C project is an over three million dollar project. So at this point, pending any questions?
How does this relate to the budget that we're going to be looking at? I am, we've been having discussions in regards to the potential for a large deficit in spending, and how does that relate to this? Is there an option to not spend this to make sure that we are good? Because I, I'm very concerned of what we are going forward, and is this something that we have to do or we want to do? And I, I, yes, I feel very strongly about that.
So this is something that your board has chosen to prioritize, and it's, it's in a set aside and in assigned reserves. Your, your board, of course, could change that, I will point out that we do have other assigned reserves that we could help, you know, on a one-time basis with our other budget issues, and we'll be talking about that more at our later item on the budget, but your board could change that, but, but there are other assigned reserves that you could use as well.
Is, is there a way to delay this in, in stating when we have to spend this? I, I really, I am very concerned of our budget, and bike lanes are, are really important to get people to their jobs and so forth, so I'm not saying that that's not appropriate, but I want to see this as a whole picture, then for my own self, to make sure, I, I don't want to be cutting salaries and, or not salaries, but employees and so forth versus recovering a bike lane.
My understanding.
That's my own personal opinion, I would like to open that up to the board, to have your own points made, please. Supervisors.
This is Steve, this is Steve Bennett.
Yes.
So a, a, a number of things. One, you know, we, we have a policy of not using, you know, one-time funds for ongoing expenses, so that whole issue in terms of, of where we're going to be is, you know, the, the, this is the use of one-time funds, number one. Number two, we, we, we did make this, you know, commitment, and we do have significant reserves at this point in time. I am not insensitive to the fact that we may have some challenges, we don't know for sure where things are going with CARES Act, but I wouldn't, it's so, it's been so hard to get momentum on these bike lanes, so hard to build to this point, that I certainly would, would not think that the prudent thing for us to do would be to stop at this point in time, and it almost feels penny wise and pound foolish from that standpoint. That being said, I think that the fundamental question in front of us is whether we go with option A or option B, and I do have some, I, I do, would like to, you know, hear from my colleagues on the board about that, but also I'd like to hear more from roads who are out there, you know, assessing these. I think they're both worthy projects, the Laguna Road project is worthy, but also, you know, doing the Rose, the Rose Avenue project is, is worthy, so I'm struggling with that one. That's what I would like to see us getting, perhaps being able to finalize our position on that next week when we adopt the budget, giving some direction, but my question's just procedurally, can we do that? And that's a question for both David Fleisch and for, for Mike Powers and anybody at Fiscal. Can we get more information about options A and options B and finalize this with our board discussion next Tuesday? So that's my first question.
Sure, I'll, I'll defer the budget questions because that's not my area of expertise. What I'm, I make, what I'm hoping for today is a recommendation as to which way we proceed, the actual money in which year and when do we do that, again, is certainly up to, to your board and, and the CEO's office. The, with respect to the projects, again, these are ranked based upon the criteria that your board approved, considering all of those elements, both of the projects have value, when you look at where they are relative to, to each other, the, of the total hundred and fifteen points, the Rose project scored sixty-seven, and the Laguna project scored fifty-five. So with respect to value based upon the criteria.
You say fifty-five or sixty-five?
Fifty-five. So there's a twelve point.
Fifty-five versus sixty-seven.
Yes, sir, there's a twelve point difference between the two.
Yeah.
Laguna, if you're not familiar with that, let me see if I can show you where that is on the map, is the orange stretch that you see in the center lower portion of the map, it comes off of, as you come off of Petrero Road. If this will work. It's, it's out in the Oxnard Plain, so it feeds, there we go, thanks, I just needed Lori's help. It's, you can't see, it's right here in the orange, that's Laguna Road right there. So it's a longer stretch that feeds an area in the Oxnard Plain from behind, from behind the college essentially through that area. The, the Rose section is this area right in here.
I don't think we can see the, where you're showing on your PowerPoint.
So.
Do that.
Yeah, so the, the orange kind of L-shaped one, a little bit below the, the, the name of the city of Camarillo, and to the right of the names of Port One Eme and Oxnard is, is Laguna. And then the Rose stretch is the piece that you see that has the red line in between, that says green on both sides and reddish colored line in between. That is very near El Rio, we already have done quite a bit of safe, safer out to school work there, it would be an extension of the bike lanes from there up to, ultimately, as there's an additional project on here, up, up to State Route one eighteen. So they both have different value in terms of what they're for. I, I'm hoping I'm answering your question.
My, my original, my original thinking was because it ranked higher, I was leaning that way for that project, but I just wondered if we, you know, could, could, you know, do a further investigation of that, but, you know, we talk about disadvantaged communities and, you know, just sort of the impacts of bike lane, I know it would, would change the day-to-day feel of that neighborhood some, right in there. So that's what I was leaning towards, the only question I had is, is can we, can we, can we, you know, make sure that we thought that through carefully? You know, we, we got this, you know, we got this on Thursday and stuff, so anyway, that's, that's probably where I'm leaning, but, but I wanted to get more information about the value of both of these and see if I, we can revisit that, I, my, my question is can we revisit it next week when we do the final budget adoption, which is not the final, but just the spending plan adoption.
Madam Chair.
Yes Supervisor Zaragoza.
I, you know, I think it's important, I think that Dave says it's important over the connectivity of the bike route over in El Rio, and we've done a lot of, we're safe route to school projects, and that is really needed out there for the, for the, for the residents of El Rio, so I think it's important that we, that we continue with that Rose Avenue and bike route. Thank you.
If I can point out, part of the reason this project is as expensive as it is, is if you're familiar with that area, we've already put sidewalk and guardrail on one side of the road, so all of the widening in order to do this will have to be on the other side of the road, which requires relocation of about twenty-one Edison poles, which we're required to pay for, and that's about a half a million dollars to relocate those poles. So that's part of the reason why this project is as expensive as it is, is because it's sandwiched between existing infrastructure that has some of it, which has to be relocated, and unfortunately, that's just an artifact of what's there.
And that's in a category C?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Dave, I think we're also working with Oxnard on that, right, to relocate those, those power lines and so forth on the, on the west side of Rose, is that correct?
It would be Southern Cal Edison that we would be working with.
Okay, right.
The city of Oxnard would not be paying. The city of Oxnard would not be paying anything?
No, because it's within the unincorporated county.
Correct.
Initially, we thought it was part of Oxnard, but it's in our unincorporated area.
Correct.
Thank you, Dave.
The other thing that I will, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Please, go ahead.
I was just saying, the other thing I will point out is we are continuing to apply for grants for projects as well. The active transportation cycle is currently open and the Santa Rosa Road Bike Lane Project actually will be one of our grant applications. So obviously, if we get grant funding, then there's not a necessity to use this funding as well. And that's a process that we go through all of the time. Your board provided criteria for us, both for pedestrian and bike projects, and we're using those in ranking the projects and moving forward with grant applications routinely also. So there is that money available as we go forward.
And I, Supervisor's comments, I too agree that Rose makes more sense in the terms of the community that's there. Also, we've been spending money putting bike lanes in farmland out in the Oxnard Plain and it really doesn't have a lot of people riding there.
No.
I like the idea of waiting to get input, quite frankly, from bicycling communities. And if we could start doing more of that, I think we will be, you know, getting the really good input and putting the bike lanes where they're most needed. So I, that's what I would do if we waited that week, would be certainly to share with the bicycling community and hope we can, in the future, bring that as part of the process. Also, looking at Reed Road, I think that area, particularly since we have a bike lane on Santa Rosa Road and we, there is a bike lane available for bicyclists to avoid the Norwegian grade, which is pretty dangerous to ride your bike up, having done that. So being able to connect Santa Rosa to Reed Road and then they, that can go over into the city of Thousand Oaks in a safer way, I think that it has a lot of value also.
If I, if I can point out regarding your comment, this, these routes are based upon the wayfinding study that was done. And so this has taken input from the bicycling community. All of these routes are part of that wayfinding study, the ones that scored higher. So we could certainly go back and get more input, but we did do a pretty extensive public outreach to develop the list that we have.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
He said something important that wayfinding folks did recommend that. And also in the Rose area and other areas for that matter, it's also a safety issue, which I think is extremely important for all of us. But the wayfinding people, that was one of the things that the residents wanted to really, you know, desperately. Thank you.
Right. And as I was looking at, just like, we have a choice between A or B, what is their choice on A or B? You know, so that, that's the kind of thought that I was thinking and I'm glad that certainly we have the wayfinding study and Strava also, the hot parts of Strava, which also show where cyclists are, and that's incorporated into.
Yes.
This is Steve.
Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I just offer this and that is, I think, knowing members of the bike community, if we give them a choice between just the A and B in front of us, I think we'll have a lot of people lobby for what it is that they particularly would be riding, which the bicycle community may be different than what we would get lobbied from people that would be less likely to lobby us, which would be the people from El Rio, you know, focused on the bike lane. And that's why we had that ranking where we didn't just take into consideration what people that ride a lot, we took in all the other issues, safety, et cetera. So when you have multiple criteria like this, I think for better or for worse, I've tried to be consistent with my mind and tried to, as much as possible, stick with the rankings. And our ranking ranks Rose in front of Laguna. So I think that that's, I'm happy to, you know, be able to revisit if we have to and be, I mean, happy to revisit again on next week. But for right now, I'd be inclined to make the motion to go forward with option B, which would have Rose be completed and Laguna wait and try to do the grant because we have the grant for Laguna. And I have the feeling that that, I don't, I don't know, but I hope that that grant will be attractive because it's eight miles of, you know, bike lane. So there's pretty good per mile, which could, might make it look attractive. I don't think it looks as attractive to try to get grant funding for Rose Avenue. And so I would make the motion that we go with option B, but if any of us comes up with more information, then we can revisit that next week. That was my question. I assume we could change this next week if we get additional information that's really important to us. Is that correct? Somebody, CEO's office or fiscal or, but I think it's Mr. Fleisch. Do you have to have the answer today is my question?
No, no, sir. I do not. This is just guidance from your board as we move forward. There's not been specific money allocated next year in the budget that needs to be decided. This is just getting guidance from your board based upon, you know, not having had the category C. If you choose to move forward with option B, and we were looking at four years of funding, this is a year and a half's worth of that funding. So it might be wait till, you know, bank one year and then pick it up the next year and do the project. That would be certainly an option.
And the only thing I would add to that is that your board has already set aside funds in an assigned reserve and there's still $6 million remaining. So that, that's already done.
Yeah.
Supervisor Zaragoza, if you could go first.
I second the motion.
Okay. Kailed on Supervisor Bennett had a comment first.
I, I'm, I'm fine.
You're good? Okay. Supervisor Parks.
I just seen that, I, the Reed Road is, it has 11 and it's B. Is that included in this?
Yes, the ones that are in dark green on the, that you see up there now are all included in the funding option B plan.
And just comment that, you know, with the CARES money, the idea that the federal government gave Ventura County Transportation Commission $71 million in CARES funding and then gave the cities about $1 million average each, you know, it just really shows you the amount of money that's available right now for transportation generally in Ventura County. This to me is key. It's active transportation and it's something that's for the health of our community and it aligns with our goals. And the fact that there are matching funds available is very intriguing. So I wouldn't be looking at how do we stop funding our bike lanes at this point. So I definitely support the motion.
And let me be clear, I'm not stopping the funding of bike lanes. I just want to make sure that we are able to get matching grants, that we are able to secure funding for all the needs that are in the county and then rolling this out as we can, I think is appropriate. And I want to make sure that no supervisor is confused by my statement earlier about that because I do promote bike lanes. I just want to make sure we're doing that in a cost-effective way. And so that's how I look at it. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Bennett, I believe, and a second by Supervisor Zaragoza, was it?
Yes.
So if there's any other further questions?
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes. Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. There's a lot of work associated and I hope we don't, we keep the category C in case we can get grants and we can use CARES funding or any other item to be able to do the modes of transportation. I think that's great. Next item is our 43 and.
44.
Oh. Yeah, we reached 43, 44, sorry. Thank you. It's the approval of the Authorization for General Services Agency, direct and sign the First Amendment for our solar facility operations. That's exciting.
Good afternoon, Chair Long and other board members. Mr. Powers, for the record, I'm Rob Harris, Principal Engineer of General Services Agency. I come before you this morning to request the approval and to authorize the General Services Director or designated to sign the First Amendment to the amended and restated Solar Facility Operating and Site Exclusivity Agreement and the First Amendment to the Energy Services Agreement with Ventura Solar and to authorize the General Services Agency Director or designated to make corrections, clarifications, the technical, technical modifications to both the amended and restated Solar Facility Operating and Site Exclusivity Agreement and the Energy Services Agreement. And I have, Chas Chabasi from Ventura Solar is with me in the room in case there's any, any questions that you guys might have later. The initial approval of this project was before the board on April 2017. And then on February 2018, there was, some modifications to the, to the language was approved on February 2018. Just to recap what the project is, the site address is 67 East, 267 East Telegraph Road in Fillmore, 11,500 panels, a three-megawatt solar photogate system. There is no capital cost to the county to get this project done. The estimated greenhouse gas savings, 2,030 metric tons. The estimated production from the solar array is 7.3 million kilowatt hours per year, approximately 5% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions for the county. The, there's, the contract with Ventura Solar includes a fixed rate for our energy costs of six and a half cents per kilowatt hour. Right now, our average SCE rate is eight cents per kilowatt hour. So in the first year, we anticipate paying Ventura Solar $465,000, but we would get an SCE credit to our account for 5,000, 565,000 for a net $1,000 estimated for the first year and estimating SCE costs to rise 2% per year. This is a fixed cost for, for the next 25 years. So we're estimating over that 25 years for anywhere between a four to five million dollar cost savings to the county over that term. And another comparison point, the accounts that's on the, on the, the CPA right now, the average rate we pay per kilowatt hour is between nine and nine, and a, nine and a half cents per kilowatt hour. So this is even a bigger savings in relationship to that. Since coming up to the board on February 2018, Ventura Solar has received approval from SCE for the RESPCT in the interconnection agreement. Ventura Solar has worked with our county planning and all the zoning clearance has been approved for the project. All the construction drawings are done and our building and safety department has reviewed those drawings. And there was, in his third visit to the board, is to approve some small changes to the wording in the agreement, which is in pages three and four of the board letter. So upon your approval this morning, or this afternoon now, Ventura Solar can pull the actual, actual construction permit, construction start and estimate completing the project by the end of this calendar year and, and all the SCE final sign-offs and when we will actually start receiving benefit from the project will probably be about February 2021. And that's my short presentation. Are there any questions from the board?
And as I got on in 2017, this was a major item for us with Chevron and the Superfund site and the city of Fillmore and making sure it's clear and safe for the community. And there was many different plans and which ideas of what to do with this space. And I think this is a very useful one that is going to help our community and make sure that the residents aren't going to be looking at buildings but a beautiful view. And yet we're still getting the resources from the sun to power our, our systems. So I really do appreciate the creativity and making sure that this happens. And a great presentation. Thank you very much. Supervisors, any questions, comments, statements? I really like this picture, by the way. Okay, and seeing then, can I get a motion to approve?
Steve Bennett, well, Steve Bennett, I'll make comment on the motion.
Yes, please, Supervisor Bennett.
We just, we just got to keep hammering away at climate change and reducing our carbon And so I'll make the motion. I certainly appreciate the project.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. And I believe we can get a second from Supervisor Huber.
Correct.
Thank you. So it's been first and second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Parks? Yes. Oops, sorry, yes. Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. And motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
I just want to say, great job, Rob and Dave and the GSA team for sticking with this project. Very complicated, very innovative. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is 45. And that is our approved plans and specifications for a medical center Ronald McDonald family room. It's another good one.
Chair Long, Supervisor CEO, Mr. Powers. I'm Brian Deanna with the Public Works Agency and I do have some slides. I apologize, I'll run through them as quick as I can, but thank you for the time.
You're good.
Today. So we were in, in front of your board last October to explain the project in some detail and for a consultant contract. The team has done a lot of work since then in that short time. We finalized the design, obtained a permit from Mosh Pod and put the drawings out to bid. And so now we're here in front of you today for award of a construction contract. So let me just give a little bit of explanation of the project. So the Ronald McDonald family rooms are on the second floor of the old hospital building, 305. It coordinates perfectly with the new North Tower, which the second floor is dedicated solely to women's and children's services. So a quick jaunt down the hallway brings you to two separate spaces, a quiet room, which is a place for sitting to relax and recover, and then family room, which is a little bit more activity, some laundry, computers, an eating area. Here is what the family room will look like. The furniture is modular and is supposed to be set up so you can move and change in different spaces and different activities in different areas. And if you look at the bottom right picture, once we open up those windows, it's going to have a great view. This project is funded solely by donations. I just want to give you a quick update on that. Amy and her team, along with partnership with the Ronald McDonald House Charities, have done a fabulous job. We've gotten 836,000 so far, working towards our goal of the total estimated project cost of just over 1.2 million.
And what organization is Amy and her team?
With the Healthcare Foundation.
Thank you.
And that's, that's it. I just wanted to, so any more questions? Actually, Amy with the Healthcare Foundation is here and so is Dr. Pinkhouser still with BCMC. So if there's any questions, we're happy to.
Amy, could you please come up? I just know that so many of our community donate to the foundation and how powerful it is. So I appreciate you being here.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure. And I have to say Ventura County has been a shining light in the Southern California region amidst the pandemic and everything in the entire Southern California region, especially with Ronald McDonald House Charities. This project is going through thanks to our forward-thinking county leadership and our hospital leadership and healthcare agency leadership. And a lot of projects have been stalled and yet Ventura continues to forge on. These two will be the only spot with two separate spaces, as our public works team stated. We're also very, very fortunate because of the square footage. A lot of family room projects are so small and these, these hospitals are not going to be able to admit as many families. And I have an update this morning and they. And, uh, I have an update this morning, uh, and they agreed to let me share, and their family, we have a local family, and they have three young girls, and their oldest, their four-year-old, uh, became sick and lethargic, um, and they brought, called their pediatrician, asked him to come to the VCMC emergency department. They took one look at her and called Dr. Francisco Bracho. She was transferred to Children's Hospital of Los Angeles and has leukemia, and this morning, the dad and the grandma came and asked for a tour because they want to get their treatment here, close to home. And there's a good possibility with our short construction timeline, that this child and this family will actually be using this space. And this family had come and raised money for this children's center for cancer and blood diseases because of the dedication that you've had to treating kids close to home. Little did they ever dream, in their wildest imagination, that they would actually be utilizing these services that we are so committed to here in the county. And I just want to thank all of you and your leadership, and allowing the Healthcare Foundation and our Board of Directors to be of service to our healthcare and to projects like this. So thank you. So yeah, it's been good. We have about a four hundred thousand dollar gap, but Ronald McDonald House Charities of Southern California has bridged that because they have seen the commitment of this community. And they said, we will bridge that gap and we'll continue to fundraise. So we still have some work to do, but with our community, we've seen it once, time and time again, how we rise to the occasion, especially moments like this.
Well, and thank you so much. I just want to take this opportunity also, you weren't here with our COVID-19 update, but so many great things that the foundation is doing for our hospital, for our doctors, our nurses, all our employees that are working there, and I just want to say thank you very much, because I know how hard you've been working with the Central, World Central Kitchen, and, and the masks, and the three Ds, and, and, um, try, just everything from gift cards and, and just so much. Um, the extra rooms for our doctors to stay in, the RVs, I mean, I know I'm not hitting all of them, but it's just every single thing that has been going on. I just appreciate the team of volunteers and all, um, that are working for this. It's been amazing to, to see, really has.
Well, thank you. It's been a, I've been simply a conduit, really reflecting the goodness that I see, uh, you know, within our county and the healthcare, and just connecting community partners that want to partner with our incredible leadership. I mean, that, the, what we're doing, that they want to partner because of the quality work that we deliver.
And this, and this room just shows the confidence that the Ronald McDonald House has for our physicians.
Indeed.
Because we really do a, an excellent job with treatment and care for our community, and, and that's, that's just amazing.
Mike, you were there. You were there when they said, we want to partner with facilities like this that are committed with a mission like that, and...
I was there, but I was really watching you just persuade them to do it, frankly. And, uh, you know, I think what you brought, you brought Ronald McDonald House, Vince Bryson, Adam McCormick, to, to meet our docs and our system. I think that, that, when they could see the passion and the quality, Dr. Fankhauser, Dr. Cho, our Pediatrics Program, Dr. Flossy, they go, whoa, there's something special here, in terms of the quality and the commitment to the whole person care. And to see this, this is getting real now. I mean, all this money that's been raised so far is on an idea, on a concept that doesn't exist, but now there's the possibility is that this is going to, it's going to happen, it's going to be beautiful, it's going to be one of the largest family rooms that they have, as, as I think Vince mentioned.
Correct.
So that's exciting, those windows opening up and bringing light into that old Homer Auditorium. I mean, that's just going to revolutionize that whole area and bring sort of that healing light for families. The work that Amy's done, Public Works, I see Chris here, Chris Cooper, and Jeff Pratt and everybody, they've just been champs at keeping this project going. Uh, the community response has been incredible, the first walk, the, the participation they had, the money that's been raised, the National Charity League Juniors, Ventura Rotary, Jeff Bergen in the Ventura Rotary has completely adopted this program, right? I mean, he was wearing a red cape out there one time. I saw it.
He was, I almost brought it for him too.
Yeah, that's right, I got it right here. No, but, I mean, it just, and then our county employees have been incredibly generous, which is not a surprise because they have generous hearts, uh, but they have donated, uh, hugely to this project as well as our county leadership. Every time we have a rally for this, uh, county leadership shows up. So just appreciate the, the great work and your passion and, and your whole boards.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Supervisors, do you have any questions, comments, concerns on this project?
Supervisor Parks, just so exciting to see this come to reality and the great work that came before. I just so much appreciate that, and what an incredibly poignant story that you told us. I mean, no one wants to, uh, ever have this situation, but if you're in that and your child's so ill, to be able to have this comfort of being with them in a, in a less institutional environment, I just, it, it's just very heartfelt, and we very much thank Ronald McDonald folks, as well as our staff and the wonderful foundation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Bennett, just another example of, uh, of the, the completeness of the mission, uh, that we're all, we're all lucky to be a part of. Thank you very much, Amy, for all your hard work on this and everybody else.
I, I appreciate everybody for their great and hard work. This is Bob Huber.
Thank you, Supervisor Huber. And with that, can I entertain a motion to approve?
We're so moved.
It's been most, uh, first by Supervisor Huber, and second by Supervisor Bennett. Uh, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, and that motion has been approved, and we're making history. So thank you very much, everyone. Next item is the forty-six, approval and ratification of execution of the grant agreement for grant funding for the Matilah Dam removal, final design project.
Good afternoon, Chair Long, members of the board, CEO Powers, for the record, Glenn Shepherd, Ventura County Public Works Watershed Protection Director. I'm here today before your board requesting that you approve and ratify actions that Watershed Protection took towards securing a grant from the Wildlife Conservation Board to fully fund design efforts to remove the Matilah Dam and related projects associated with three levees downstream. The Wildlife Conservation Board approved Watershed Protection's final design project at their May twentieth, 2020 board meeting for just over five million dollars. At the Wildlife Conservation Board meeting, letters of support were announced and included a letter from Supervisor Bennett, which included your board's resolution supporting the grant application, State Senator Hannah Beth Jackson, and from Surf Rider. Project supporting oral testimony included, uh, State Senator, former State Senator Fran Pavly, and Chuck Bonham from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife as their director. Watershed Protection appreciates and thanks your board for continued support and the CEO's leadership as we make progress and build momentum towards removing the Matilah Dam and restore the natural ecosystem along Matilah Creek and the Ventura River. This vital habitat area is home to endangered species, specifically the California, Southern California Steelhead distinct population segment, which runs from the Santa Maria, Santa Maria River down to the Tijuana River at the Mexican border. And natural sediment migration for estuary and nearshore habitats for, for beach nourishment. And I'd like to acknowledge a few other key Matilah Dam ecosystem restoration project partners. California Coastal Conservancy, Patagonia, and the Resource Legacy Fund have been extraordinarily helpful in, in, uh, again, making progress and building momentum. Accordingly, Water Persec- Watershed Protection seeks your board's approval and ratification of this very important grant. Submit your questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Bennett, or any others, do you have any comments, questions?
My, my comment is, uh, I've spent a long, long time on this, and we're still chipping away at it, and staff has been remarkably professional throughout this whole twenty-year effort, uh, on this, and, uh, so we continue to, 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 to work at it, this is one more, one more step, right, uh, in the long process of bringing this down. So with that, I'll make the motion.
Huber, second the motion.
Thank you very much. So it's been first by Supervisor Bennett, second by Supervisor Huber. Uh, any other board members want to make any comments?
Great to have the support of the Wildlife Conservation Board. They've just been outstanding in our region.
Thank you very much. And with that, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Ye- yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, and the mo- uh, motion approves unanimously.
Thank you.
And there were no other board comments on that one, I know. All right, next up is item sixty. It's public hearing regarding the adoption of resolution establishing and mending the service rates and fees for various services for our Watershed Protection District.
Good afternoon, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Robert Bravo from the County Executive Office. Today, we are here to request the board's approval for service rates and fees for fiscal year 2021. There are over twenty-one hundred different rates and fees, of which thirty-six percent have no proposed changes, thirteen percent have actually decreased, and the majority of the increases were less than five percent. Uh, as was mentioned be- earlier, um, during the COVID-19 update, we're also requesting your, your board's approval to waive certain fees, late fees, and penalties for our main fire for businesses impacted by the pandemic. Um, I, I won't go into detail because they had already done that. Anyways, that, that concludes my presentation, but first I'd like to thank, uh, from the auditor's office, Lupit Lopez, who helped with this, um, Elva McMullin from the CEO's office, and County Council Michael Walker and PB Chu, which also helped us with this, as well as all the different departments that are also help with the whole project. Um, county staff and I are prepared to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, any questions? I really do appreciate the, looking at our businesses and understanding what we can do for them, especially with the COVID-19 and so forth. So for the Fire District, for waiving fees of late fees and so forth, and really making sure we're working with our com- our companies and being the ambassadors, like Mr. Powers always talks about, I, I greatly appreciate it, because I know our business community does as well. So I appreciate, thank you. Um, with that said, can I get a motion to approve?
Huber, so moved.
And can I get a second?
Second.
It's been first by Supervisor Huber, and second by Huber, Supervisor Zaragoza. Please roll call.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Supervisor Zaragoza? Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, and that motion is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
On to, oh, wait, sorry. Um, there were no public comment notes on that?
No.
And so I opened, do I need to? Did I screw up on that one?
No.
I'm all about public transparency. So, am I, there were, I'm opening up the public comments, there were no public comments, I'm closing the public comments, and we have it unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, the review, item sixty-one, review of proposed fiscal year 2021 recommendation budget for our fire protection and so forth, so many.
Thank you, Chair Long and board members. So, yes, bringing before you, uh, quarterly update on this year's budget, but also, uh, a recommended budget for next year. And again, as we've talked about, given the unusual times and the uncertainty, uh, around, uh, state funding levels as well as federal funding levels, we felt it prudent to recommend a, what's called a recommended budget, which is in effect a spending plan, uh, for your board until some of these issues at the state and federal level are sorted out and we have greater clarity, uh, and then to bring the item back to your board sometime in September. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Kay.
Good afternoon, Chair Long, board members, Mr. Powers, uh, Kay Mann from the CEO's Uh, we thought we'd begin, um, with a little bit of background information, uh, just, uh, since, uh, this is somewhat, uh, it's a different process than prior years. Uh, the county's budget process, uh, is actually governed by state code, uh, called the County Budget Act, and it sets the timeline for the county's budget process. So by June thirtieth, the recommended budget is to be presented to the Board of Supervisors and is to be approved by the Board of Supervisors by June thirtieth. If a budget is not adopted by June thirtieth, uh, this approval will provide the authority to spend until the budget is adopted, which we hope to be sometime in September. For the adopted budget itself, it must be presented to your board, uh, by September eighth, and at that time, uh, the, there, the notice of a sale for the budget hearings is also to be published, and then on October eighth, or by October eighth, uh, the budget hearings must be concluded, uh, they must be held, uh, and then the budget adopted by October eighth. Well, normally, we would present the preliminary budget today, and then hold hearings in about two weeks, and then adopt the budget. But due to the uncertainty created by the COVID-19 emergency and the evolving state and, uh, federal funding situation, uh, we needed to revise our budget process. So today, we are presenting the initial balanced recommended budget to your board for review, and then we will return for approval of the budget next week, June sixteenth, and so that this will provide spending authority come July one, and until the budget is, is adopted in September. Just a few items to note, per the County Budget Act, the, your approval next week would not extend automatically to provide spending authority for capital assets, transfers out, or any new positions that are included in the budget unless specifically approved by your board. And also to clarify, uh, your board still has the ability to, to make any kind of revisions to this recommended budget all the way up to the time that the budget is adopted. So the plan currently is to adopt the budget in September. We will submit a revised recommended budget, and at that time, publish notice for the date of, of the budget hearings, and then hold public hearings to adopt the budget. So this, it's the initial baseline recommended budget was developed using a number of assumptions. We had updated salaries and benefits to include, to include any negotiated salary increases, and the budget includes all positions approved to date. In terms of the retirement rates, um, general fund department costs were, were adjusted to incorporate rate smoothing. Um, as you recall, the Vis- the Visera composite rates decreased substantially from our current year's twenty-eight and a half percent to twenty-three point three-two percent, and, but we had wanted to do some internal rate smoothing, and, um, as such, uh, that internal rate smoothing, uh, increased the rate from twenty-three percent to the twenty-fourth, to twenty-five, twenty-five point nine-three percent, and, um, which is still lower than our current twenty-eight and a half percent. And this has allowed us to, to set aside twelve and a half million dollars in the pension mitigation reserve for future years. We've also updated charges, various charges, and debt service costs. We've also updated charges, various charges, uh, and debt service costs per the Budget Development Manual. The budget does not include all COVID-19 impacts. Uh, for example, reduced revenues, we will be looking at that. Uh, and, um, also, um, it does not include any, uh, additional state, uh, and federal funding that may come our way.
Yes, thank you, Kay. And as to the, uh, possible state and federal funding, so, right now, there is a negotiation going on at the state level between the Senate and the legislature and the governor's office over a possible realignment backfill. And not for the whole amount, uh, but maybe for anywhere from a quarter to a half of it. Uh, so we'll see where that, that ends up. They are statutorily required to have their budget agreement in place by June fifteenth, uh, Monday. So we'll, we'll know more on that shortly. Some of that would be from their reserves, I think, like forty percent, and some would be from trigger, that's if they got additional, if the state received additional, uh, CARES Act or federal funding. With respect to the county's, uh, federal CARES Act funding, we have the hundred and forty-seven million dollar check, with some more recommended by the state as well. What we're looking for really is the flexibility to use that, uh, for revenue loss replacement. Uh, we don't have that, uh, right now. We've seen in other CARES Act areas, like in healthcare and in transportation, they have, uh, provided that flexibility. We're simply seeking that, that same flexibility. And so even if we didn't get any more funds, uh, we would probably be in good shape if we just got that flexibility. So those are two of the big, uh, two or three of the big areas of uncertainty. We're hoping to get cleared up in the next few months, so we can finalize our budget.
All good points.
So, um, in the coming weeks and months, we will prepare a revised balanced recommended budget. This will allow us additional time to, to quantify any revenue loss. Also, hopefully, we will receive some clarity, uh, from the CARES Act in terms of funding eligibility. And we will come back, and we will, um, adjust expenditures and revenues accordingly. We'll update, uh, based on, uh, new information, including, uh, the, it's the adjustment to reduce our debt service costs by some two million dollars, uh, as a result of our refinancing. And as we've mentioned before, departments are preparing five, ten, and fifteen percent reduction scenarios. And, uh, so, uh, once we have all of that information, uh, we will put that together, and, uh, we will, uh, recommend action to balance the budget. I think we had mentioned before, uh, that our current estimate of the revenue loss stands at about forty million for now, but again, we will be looking at that, and we will updating that. And we will rebalance the budget, and we will present that to your board in September. Just a quick overview of, of this baseline sort of placeholder budget. It's county-wide, two point four billion dollars, uh, up about seventy-five million from the nineteen-twenty adopted. Uh, non-general funds increased by half a percent, and non-general funds by six percent. But the majority of that increase in the non-general funds relates to, it's infrastructure and capital projects across a number of funds, uh, including road fund, uh, airports, and watershed protection. For the general fund appropriations, one point one-five billion, but five point seven million increase, uh, at about half a percent. Our general fund, general purpose revenues are at four hundred and forty-six million, up about eight point eight million dollars, and that represents a two percent increase over the current year adopted budget. In terms of our total FTEs, a little over nine thousand. It's an increase of a hundred and sixty-seven. Uh, general fund, um, forty-six FTEs, uh, that includes, um, it's previously approved positions, uh, of the twenty-four for public health, and, uh, we had eleven for, uh, for, um, for area agency on aging. And non-general funds, uh, is a hundred and twenty-one increase. For our rainy day unassigned fund balance, uh, we're recommending an increase of one point two million, uh, to one hundred and fifty-one million dollars, and that will keep the, the ratio at thirteen point one percent. And that's based on, um, our current estimate of our fund balance savings at the end of the year is five million dollars. And so we are proposing that, uh, one point two-five million, uh, be, uh, would go to unassigned, uh, to keep our, um, ratio at thirteen point one percent, uh, and the remainder, uh, be placed into our, uh, program mitigation. Uh, I will go over that.
This is Steve Bennett. I, I just have a question and a comment that we, we need. We've had, we've all had such, um, that we've all been moving, and you guys in particular have been working really hard. So, um, a, a little bit of, uh, lightness might help. But I can't, my, my screen just not really clear. All the way back there in two thousand and two, could you tell us, what does that say our reserves were back then? I can't, I can't quite see that.
Yeah, it's negative, yes. Yes, that is not a typo.
I, I hope my laughter resonated. Supervisor Bennett does a great job of highlighting this screen every time, and I really appreciate it.
Yes, that's why we have this slide every time.
And I, I sure hope to see it on Ju- June sixteenth, too. Thank you.
A good possibility.
Yeah. So just to recap our reserves, the last time we were before your board, which was at mid-year, uh, our total reserves were two hundred and fifty million. And since then, we have spent about twenty-five million dollars from those reserves. Uh, and I'll review that in the next slide in just a bit, uh, and provide more detail. But in terms of what we're recommending in the, um, in the twenty-one preliminary budget, uh, as I mentioned before, uh, we have five million dollars savings. So we, we are proposing that one point two-five go to unassigned, uh, our rainy day fund, and, uh, three point seven-five go to our program mitigation. And, um, the remaining twelve and a half is, uh, our pension mitigation reserve. So this is a detailed of our assigned. Uh, and as I mentioned, uh, we have spent in, um, some twenty-six million dollars out of program mitigation. Fifteen million of that was transferred to EOC for the COVID response. Uh, and that, uh, fifteen million will be reimbursed, and so it will come back to replenish our, uh, its program mitigation account. And, uh, the other large, um, decrease related to eleven million dollars uh, for the purchase of, uh, the, uh, it's Kai Teekatit building. And as I mentioned, under a recommended, uh, twelve and a half for, uh, for our retire, uh, for our pension mitigation, and, uh, of the five million of what we're estimating of our fund balance savings, three point seven-five to program mitigation, and one point two-five to our unassigned. So just a quick, it's the update, although I've already mentioned that, um, in terms of the general fund. Uh, we expect, uh, to have about five million dollars available at the end of the year in savings. Um, as a reminder, uh, we will be presenting the Year-end Budget Adjustment Board Letter on, on June twenty-third. Uh, and, um, as I believe the, the board has been updated in terms of, uh, VCMC's financial position. They were expecting a, uh, negative five point two million estimated change in net position some weeks back. So that's our update on that, and I would like to now turn it over to, uh, VCMC.
Mr. Foley. Come on down.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Uh, Mr. Powers, Bill Foley, Director of the Healthcare Agency. As Kay mentioned, um, our projected net loss, uh, for this year, based on, uh, the third quarter performance, is, uh, five point two million. Um, the, um, I should point out that, um, uh, our EBITDA, which, uh, EBITDA is earnings, uh, before depreciation and interest. And it's a common measure of, uh, financial performance, um, for, uh, organizations and, uh, systems. And, um, our projected EBITDA for this year is twenty-seven point three million. Uh, at this point in time, for, uh, for the, uh, for next year, uh, FY twenty-one, uh, we're, uh, budgeting earnings of twenty-nine point four million, uh, and a, uh, loss of, uh, three point one, uh, million. I should point out that our projection, uh, for this year, the five point two million, uh, loss is a significant, uh, improvement, uh, from where we were at mid-year. If you recall, we were, uh, projecting a fifteen million dollar, uh, loss at, uh, at mid-year. Our budget initiatives for next year, of course, what we're, uh, projecting now in the budget does not take into account the, uh, targets that Kay mentioned, the five, ten, fifteen percent. So we will be, you know, working on that, uh, with, uh, with the county, with the CEO's office. But, uh, our budget initiatives for, uh, next year uh, include, uh, modest, uh, volume growth of, uh, three point eight percent, uh, an increase in Gold Coast reimbursement rates of six million. Uh, we're currently in negotiations, uh, with, uh, Gold Coast. And, uh, increase in other commercial, uh, rates of, uh, three point two million. An increase in supplemental funding attributed to higher federal matching of, uh, seven million. Uh, continued improvements in collections, denials, and coding. Uh, focus particularly on our emergency, uh, department, where we feel we have opportunity, and we've got a project, um, focused on that. And continued improvements, uh, with our, uh, clinic, PSOA, uh, contracts, uh, related to increased productivity and, uh, reduced expenses. What I'd like to do is just highlight, um, I won't go through all of these, but highlight some of our initiatives, uh, for, uh, next year, uh, including, um, uh, continued improvement in OR scheduling, uh, resulting in, uh, uh, growth of surgeries. Uh, we've got the capacity to grow, and, um, uh, we are very focused on that. We're, um, uh, expanding our capacity to create an eight-bed observation unit. Uh, observation, uh, units are designed for patients of, uh, twenty-four hours or less stay. Uh, currently, our observation patients are cared for on our general acute care unit. So we will, uh, have a specific unit for observation, uh, patients. We really, uh, feel that it's time to expand our psychiatric, uh, capacity. We've talked a lot about it in the time I've been here. Uh, we've talked with other, um, providers, uh, in the county. Uh, no one is jumping up to, uh, you know, to do it. So we really feel it's inherent to our mission, and the need is really there to expand, uh, psychiatric capacity. So, uh, so the budget, uh, includes an expansion of our IPU from thirty to thirty-six beds, and our crisis stabilization unit, uh, from four to eight chairs. Um, and continued, uh, expansion of Santa Paula, uh, women's services. We're re-establishing mammography services at Santa Paula. And we've, uh, we, we've seen a steady increase in our obstetrics, uh, volume and, uh, deliveries. Uh, this year, uh, from, uh, January one through April, uh, we, uh, we saw fifty-one deliveries at Santa Paula Hospital, and in May alone, twenty-three, uh, deliveries. So seventy-four deliveries this year, which, um, it's like, in, in average of about, uh, fourteen to fifteen, uh, deliveries, uh, per month, which is really where we had, if you remember, that's where we want it to be. Uh, so we're, uh, really happy about that. In ambulatory care, uh, I mentioned the, uh, PSOAs, and, um, we've seen, um, uh, uh, continued improvement, uh, with our, uh, PSOAs, and we expect that to continue as we renew those contracts, uh, this next year. Continued growth of telehealth, uh, services in our clinics. Uh, about seventy percent of our clinic volume is, has been telehealth, and we expect that will continue, uh, in, uh, in the future. And, uh, Dr. Cho and the leadership of ambulatory are, uh, are planning, uh, for that. Behavioral health, uh, integration, uh, within, uh, within our primary care, uh, clinics is another, uh, major, uh, major initiative, uh, to address the behavioral health needs of our, uh, of our, uh, patients. So those are some of the key initiatives next year, and, um, be happy to, um, answer any questions.
Supervisors, let me open it up to all of you first. I personally would like to say thank you so much for the efforts that are been going on for VCMC and also Santa Paula, even with all of the COVID-19, just amazing work that's being done. To say that that many births have were born in Santa Paula Hospital is, just speaks volumes, because we were in a conversation, the beginning of the year, I think it was, about maybe ten. And how do we do this? And it was the trust of our community with our doctors and the midwife program, I think, is really been, I've been hearing, has been just amazing. So I, I want to say thank you. I know that later on, I, the Board of Supervisors, our board, had stated that, uh, we'd want to get an update on the strategy as to the future of Santa Paula Hospital and what's going on. So I will urge to do that, not now, because of COVID-19, but that we're not forgetting about that. And I appreciate the outreach that we're still continuing to do with the Santa Paula, um, Blue Ribbon Committee, to make sure that we're still on with the mammograms and the CTs, that we're still moving forward with the things that we said we were going to do, even with all the other stuff you guys have going on. So I just appreciate it.
Now, we'll be happy to give you an update on the, uh, on Santa Paula. We did provide the Blue Ribbon Committee, as you know, with a update, because we haven't been able to, uh, to meet.
Yes.
So we'll, Dr. Frank Hauser and I will be happy to, to provide that.
Thank you, and I, I, Supervisor Bennett and I are on the Oversight Committee, and we get to learn all these great things that are happening. I want to make sure that our whole board gets to hear that, as well as our community, because it's the vision of our healthcare system, and how we are protecting our community with that healthcare system, I think is important.
Thank you.
Chair Long. Yes, Supervisor Parks.
I, I want to, uh, thank, um, Dr. Foley to help us get more crisis stabilization unit beds and inpatient psychiatric unit beds. I know these were both recommendations of the Borderline, um, Task Force. So I'm, I'm really delighted to see that we are increasing. I know that, uh, going from four to eight chairs, the CS two is, uh, is key, and I'm wondering, uh, if we'll also be looking at having, uh, crisis stabilization unit in the East County, too. I know that's looked at as a tremendous benefit, also for our officers who don't have to travel to West County when they have patients.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be happy to.
Supervisor Huber, hold on one second.
Answer that.
I'll fully answer.
As, um, we are, uh, uh, in the midst of our strategic planning. We, we would have completed our strategic planning, uh, by now, if not for the pandemic. Uh, so we are still working on our strategic plan. Uh, we will be coming back, uh, through our Oversight Committee with an overview of the strategic plan. But certainly, as part of that process, uh, we are looking at services throughout the county, and we will, you know, that will be on our list of things to do.
Thank you. Supervisor Huber?
Yes, I just want to say.
Yes, I just want to say I agree with Supervisor Parks' comments.
Anyone else with that? Kay? Thank you. Oh, wait, hold on one second. There's one thing from Sivette Johnson.
Yes.
Our behavioral health.
Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors. Chair Long.
Thank you.
And CEO Powers, I just want to note that we have been working with a group who, they run CSUs, they build them from the ground up, or they'll do rehab to facilities. They have been in conversation with Supervisor Huber's office. So we are actively trying to bring a CSU to East County as we do recognize the need. It's a process, so it's not something we can do overnight, but it's something that we recognize. We've heard the community, we've heard stakeholders, and we are trying to bring this to East County.
Thank you. And thank you for the social distance.
Thank you, Sivette. I appreciate your comment.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sivette. The Behavioral Health Advisory Board, on which I sit, also sees this as a number-one priority, and so it's good to see putting out funding in our budget to accomplish. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, back to Kay.
You know, I just want to take a moment, if I may.
Yes, please, Mr. Powers.
You know, I've mentioned this before, so forgive me, but, you know, dealing with this pandemic response, trying to imagine doing it without our public hospital and clinic system, I shudder. Because when you think about so many ways, the surge capacity that VCMC provides right there alone, they were also the first hospital to step up and take non-acute patients from the long-term care facilities. The guidance that Dr. Fankhauser, Dr. Cho, and Dr. Flossi, they kind of created this 24-hour hotline for any physician anywhere in our county, anytime, to ask about, for guidance on COVID testing. It sounded too good to be true, but they actually did it, and boy, were physicians grateful, public and private. Our clinic system providing seven different drive-up sites from the get-go. So I just wanted to take a moment, I know we're talking about the budget, but you talk about the mission and the ability of this county to support the community during this pandemic. This VCMC hospital and clinic system has made a major difference. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
So to recap, today, we are presenting the initial recommended budget to your board for your review. We will return to your board next week for approval of the recommended budget, which will provide the spending authority for fiscal 2021 until the time that the budget is adopted. And again, your board has the authority to make any revisions to this recommended budget all the way up through the time of adoption. And then in September, we will present a revised, updated recommended budget, and hold budget hearings, and then adopt the budget at that time. So with that, if you have any questions?
Supervisors, I open the floor. Any questions? Mr. Powers? Wow, we're all speechless. This is a great presentation and a lot of information.
It's a lot of information. Thank your boards for the time and the questions and comments coming into this as well. And so that's why we also wanted to present it to you and have some time, and then we'll bring it back next week for final approval. So thank you.
When I always look at the budget as an iceberg. You see this beautiful spreadsheet of all this budget, but then underneath it is all the amazing work that gets done by, yes, by your big folders and just the amazing work of our county employees. So I just thank each and every one of them, and through all these hard times that we've been through, appreciate everyone's work.
And then more work to be done in coming weeks.
Yeah, lots more work to be done. In some ways, it's sort of still a little bit of the beginning of the finalization of the budget. But I thank you to Kay and Jeff and all the department leadership and fiscal officers for helping, again, navigate unprecedented times here fiscally as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, too, regarding climate change. I know we have a climate action plan, and the Board of Supervisors is incorporating that in our general plan, which is also coming up this coming year. For example, the initiative to plant trees and other items specific to climate change. And I'm just wondering if we're going to be putting a section in the budget relative
Scott, do you want to speak?
Hi, Supervisor. Scott Powers, County Executive Office. Our office is working on the general plan cost study that was directed by your board for us to perform. We have put those numbers together, and need to review it with our CEO, and we report that to your board in the, I would expect, in the end of July meeting, July 23rd, 21st meeting, that timeframe. At that time, we could roll appropriations into the budget as necessary.
Okay, and, because I am desirous of getting moving on that as soon as we can, because, you know, just approving it seems like almost a year ago, and then by the time it gets finally approved, it would be nice to just not have to wait and just get going full board on doing the proposals that are in that, so we can do our best for that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. And yes, we do have also our sustainability team in our office that works with many of the departments, including especially GSA and really all the departments overseen by Sue Hughes, with our sustainability officer, Alejandra Tez, and her, the Green Team. And actually, some of the work they did was getting that 3C Ren, seven-year grant for 48 million from PUC. So, yeah, that will continue to be a part of our budget and a priority. So more to come. Thank you.
Yes, more to come. Thank you very much. And with that receive and file, can I take a motion from the board?
Huber, so moved.
It's been first by Huber, and second, please.
Bennett, second?
Thank you. It's been first by Supervisor Huber, and second by Supervisor Bennett. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Aragosa? Excuse me.
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, and that motion is approved unanimously. We also have our correspondent agenda items 62 through 68. May I get a receive and file? A motion and a second, please.
Huber, second. Huber?
Who moved?
So it was moved by Supervisor Bennett, and second by Supervisor Huber. Are there any discussions? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Aragosa?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. So thank you very much for everyone who has viewed our meeting today. We do have a 1:30, Board of Supervisors will recess, but they'll be having our Air Pollution Control Board. At this time, our Board of Supervisors will be moving into closed session for item 69 through 74, and I believe there is nothing to report back out. So we will end the meeting at that time, but there is an Air Pollution Control Board meeting here at 1:30 that you can join on Zoom. So, Mr. Powers?
Madam Chair, we may have one announcement. We have a closed session.
That's right, there may be one announcement. I'm so used to saying there's no announcements. Supervisor Aragosa?
Madam Chair, we have an APCD after closed session. Rip up might be a little bit late, you know, if you see Lucky there.
Yes, Lucky is here, and he heard you loud and clear. So they'll be holding on. Thank you very much.
Wait, my mouse, go.
Hello, thank you very much. We are coming back from our closed session. We have two items to speak. County Council, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Supervisor Long. On item 69, which is conference with legal counsel existing litigation, name of the case is Olin Hood versus County of Ventura, Ventura County Superior Court Case Number 56-2019-00531004. The board authorized counsel to file a cross complaint against Cisco Sports Fishing, Inc. and ST Sports Fishing and/or any other enterprise or business that County Council believes should be brought into the case to seek defense and indemnification. And the vote of the board authorizing that was five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next item we're reporting out is 72. I'd like to pass this on to Mr. Powers with the initial.
Thank you, Chair Long, board members, council. Very excited to announce that after a nationwide open recruitment, the Board of Supervisors has unanimously concurred with my recommendation to appoint Melissa Livingston as our new Human Services Agency Director. So congratulations to, yes, that's right.
Yay!
So.
Please come up to the.
Yeah, she, it's amazing, 40 years of experience. None of us believe it, quite frankly, somehow. But Melissa's been a leader in our county for a long time, recently as chief deputy, but before then, in just about every area, in addition to Human Services Agency, she's been leading there. But in every area of our county, whether it's education, it's the management council, it's Lean Six Sigma, it's being on community boards, she's just a natural gifted leader, and she leads with her heart because she has great commitment and compassion for the most vulnerable. That's what her career has been all about. That's what I know her to be about, and we couldn't be more fortunate to have her serve in this critical role, especially right now during this pandemic. So Melissa, congratulations and thank you. Take it away.
Thank you. Yes, I, thank you. It's been 40 years, it's been, it's been a great career, and it's not over. And I've always wanted to end my career as the Director of the Human Service Agency, so I've gotten my wish. So thank you for that.
They were not ending.
Thank you for that, and thank you for your board's support through this process, and trusting me for the last four months as the Acting Director of the Human Service Agency. And again, during unprecedented times, and your trust in putting me there to do that job and to now appoint me is, you know, the peak of my career, obviously. But in the 40 years that I have been with the county as a public servant, I have just loved the opportunity to work hand in hand with not only the employees of the Human Service Agency, but our county family and those partners in our community, community-based organizations, nonprofits, businesses, the schools. And those relationships have been important to the work that we do. So I'm looking forward to continuing to lead the Human Service Agency in the coming years and working to transform the organization and take it to a different level, supporting our workforce in doing that, and always keeping in mind the importance of our most vulnerable residents in our community, and addressing safety, well-being, and strengthening families and children in our community so our community can be vibrant. So I look forward to the appointment, and thank you for your confidence.
Melissa, thank you so much. On behalf of the whole Board of Supervisors, we are delighted that you have accepted this position as the Director for Human Services Agency. I think it's so important, the role you've been playing in this role, and working with Barry Zimmerman before, in really being active with our community and our organizations for the betterment of our constituents here and their well-being. So I just want to say thank you very much. Look forward to what you're going to bring in this position, and just very delighted. So thank you. Thank you very much. So with that, we get to celebrate again at the end of this meeting. Great things, as we did to celebrate the beginning of this meeting. So thank you so much, and to all, a good night.